We'll call the Board of Commissioners meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mr. Walbridge?
Yes, here.
Mr. Tippett?
Here.
Mr. Wisman?
Present.
Mr. Sauer?
Here.
Mayor May?
I am here. So, let's see. All members are present and we will do... Well, it doesn't say citizen comments, so listed here, but we'll do citizen comments. I think we had...
Mayor?
Commissioner Tippett?
Do we need a motion to move number 15 to number one on the agenda?
Yeah, I was gonna say we would do the citizen comments, but yeah, we can do that. Go ahead.
I'll make that motion if we move item 15 to number one on the agenda list.
Alright, thank you. Motion by Commissioner Tippett. Second by Commissioner... Was that Commissioner Sauer?
Ah, yes.
Alright. Any discussion? Not? Okay. Some of we will move that up to the top. That was something that would be good. We'll get this out of the way. But first, citizen comments. I'm trying to find... An email from... I didn't get a chance to print that out. I just saw it. Alright, bear with me. So, we have one... We only have this one or two citizen comments. Is that correct? That we know of? Okay. Alright, so we had Mike Fitzpatrick asked two questions. One was about... Well, let me let the city clerk, just our standard procedures, let the city clerk read that first, please. Thank you.
Okay. So, the first citizen's comment I had for tonight is... And this is from Mike Clark. And he says, "In reference to the agenda item four for the September 14th meeting, I would like to know what types of documents/information require an open meetings request and which types don't. Thank you."
Okay, so that was Mike Clark?
Yes.
Perfect. So, we'll get... I guess we can send an answer to him, but unless we want to answer it now, basically... Unless the city clerk wants... I mean, sorry, city attorney, do you want to answer that now or are we going to send him a written response?
We can definitely give him a written response, Mayor, but I'll also just say that any documents, any documents of any nature, type, format, whatever, those do require an open records request from the City of Frankfurt. You can go to the website and find the form there for your convenience to be able to obtain any record. Information and questions are not subject to the open records request.
Alright.
You ready for the next comment?
Yes, please.
And this is from Mike Fitzpatrick. And he says, "I would respectfully like the Board of Commissioners to move the Boxcar Public Relations Agenda Item from the last point of business to the beginning. This relationship between the mayor and the firm has received much attention in the community and the press. Every citizen should see the discussion early without it being buried deep into a meeting that may go very late with so many agenda items. Why was this item added so late to the agenda? Of course, this relationship the mayor made with this firm was months ago without any Board of Commissioners debate or discussion. Then the local paper did an outstanding investigative look into the subject and a tremendous amount of questions need to be addressed by the mayor. This should be item one and should have been advertised weeks ago as part of tonight's agenda. Do all Board of Commissioners members have access to this firm? If not, then who has access? And if the Board of Commissioners does not have access to them, why don't they? Although the public has not been given any evidence why the previous city manager was fired, did the city manager question the Board of Commissioners and/or the mayor about the mayor's relationship with Boxcar? And by doing his job, inquiring about this mayoral-only decision, was the city manager fired because of that inquiry?" And that was Mike Fitzpatrick.
Okay, thank you. So, we will put that in the record with Mr. Clark's. Now, I'll go into agenda items. First item, since we moved it, I was gonna request that we move it anyway, since we have Mr. Jeff Dunn and Kirk Hilbrecht from Boxcar on the line. So, they can get on to... Business. And again, appreciate the questions. Apparently, people put out false information early on this relationship and this contract with Boxcar because, as we've said previously, this was on the agenda for the August work session. And this is the first work session since then, so this is the first opportunity that we've had to put it on another work session. As we said at our work session in August, at the request of staff, we passed over all the other items on the August work session that evening at request of staff. And this is the first opportunity to put things back on the agenda. So, that's on there. Number... First and foremost, I want to say too that city solicitor had sent an item that talked about the process being under the emergency declaration, that the mayor could make decisions unilaterally because of the emergency declaration. However, that being said, that information was also provided subsequent after the August meeting in an open records request that one of the commissioners had requested and also the State Journal had sent an open records request. So, those items were addressed very detailed. As far as I know, everything has been provided. I know there was an issue, I think, with our IT staff couldn't find some of the emails. So, in defense of the IT staff, our city email system is a secure system and I believe that some of those items that they tried to find, for whatever reason, they had difficulty. So, I was able to go back on my Gmail account and find things and provide that information since the August meeting. But that was addressed very detailed in open records request by one of the commissioners. So, felt like that's been addressed. However, because we wanted to put it back on the work session agenda, here it is. Want to say very implicitly that we're under the Joint Information Center protocols, meaning everything goes through the Emergency Operations Center approved by the mayor. And because of that, when we were putting the agenda together back in May for the June meeting, or yeah, it was back in May. Going back in that timeframe, we just had numerous protests, demonstrations at the Capitol. We were having two to three, sometimes four a week. Some of those, a lot of them were unannounced because they weren't getting permits through the city because the city wasn't issuing permits and they weren't getting permits through the Capitol grounds because the Capitol was not issuing permits. So, based on my years of training and experience with emergency management, certifications that I have in training, I felt it was important to go ahead and talk about having a crisis communications firm in place in that nobody could predict what was going to happen. We saw a lot of civil unrest. I think what we've seen since that time too, thankfully, in our capital city, a lot of this is based on how we've handled things here. We've kept things very calm. But we could just as easily be the next Portland or Kenosha or some of the other cities that you've seen where things have blown up. And while I'm a trained public information officer and our city emergency management director is trained in that as well, that's not our roles when we have emergencies. We have to have staff onboard that can handle large type of events. It's not... We don't need crisis communications for our local newspaper or our radio station. This is for when CNN and Fox News, ABC, CBS and NBC roll up and all the networks where we get overwhelmed, as you've seen what happens in a lot of cities, to be prepared for that. And we don't have anybody on staff that's had that type of experience or that type of training. So, this is not writing simple press releases or writing speeches. This is being prepared with people who have extensive knowledge and experience in that field. Mr. Hilbrecht was with the National Guard and was with the Adjutant General in Kentucky. Mr. Dunn's worked in a governor's office. So, having that executive experience as well as the military and emergency management experience by those two individuals, felt that that was gonna be a big help to us. So, let me see. So, let me go back, try to answer some of these other questions that were asked. The most important thing I would say is that that three of the members of the commission had talked to me in May about setting about agenda items. And when so doing, I mentioned to them that I had talked with our emergency management director. I had shared the information with the city clerk, sorry, city attorney, who had reviewed the contract. So, that went through the city attorney for contract review and sent back with a couple of changes. City manager was also provided a copy of that contract before it was negotiated or signed. And when I talked with the commissioners when they called about agenda items, I said, "Hey, I'm thinking I'm going to contract with Boxcar to help with crisis communication if needed. We will have them in place, but they'll also be available to do regular media duties and tasks as needed to help train our staff if needed." But most importantly too, one of the things too is, one of the complaints I hear from a lot of people is that the city doesn't give a lot of information on its different sites. So, to update our website, pull our social media sites together, instead of having each department has their own little silo of information. And that's not a criticism to them, but to try to pull up together and get a better outreach program for the city. Because people ask all the time, "There's just nothing to do here." And we talk about all the different programs that we have, and when people find out, they are pretty impressed. You know, our Parks Department has received numerous awards over the years from the Kentucky Parks Association and national awards. But for whatever reason, people still, you know, say they don't know what we're doing. So, trying to update that. So, they've done a social media audit, a website audit. We'll be making recommendations on how to make that better, to get better information out to the public and to talk about the different things that the city has to offer. So, three members of the commission who had reached out to me talking about agenda items in May, I told them, said, "The city attorney, and I've reviewed this with our emergency management team, we can, under the Joint Information Center protocols, could go on and make this decision. But just because we can do it, doesn't mean we're going to." So, each of those commissioners that spoke with me about that all said, "That's fine. Let's go ahead and do it." We could have waited another two weeks and put it on a work session agenda. But with all the civil unrest that was happening all around and the different types of threats that are, you know, presented to us as a capital city, we thought, "Why wait two weeks? Let's go ahead and put it out there." That's one of the things that you'll find about me. I don't hesitate to take action. And when the pandemic hit, we were one of the first to declare an emergency declaration to get things up and running. We, again, talked about that back in January when I was at the White House and President Trump and the Health and Human Services Secretary and others were there talking about the coronavirus. We had the first case that week and the first case in America. And we jumped on that very quickly. And being prepared is something that, you know, I'm proud to say that we've done here. You know, as a mayor, we're gonna get criticized for being too slow to respond. We're gonna get criticized to be too fast. If I can prevent one life from being lost or anybody from being injured or protect property, that's what I'm gonna do. So, I'll take any type of criticism for being ahead of the curve rather than trying to be behind the curve. Because people's lives depend on it. People's property and people's businesses depend on us keeping them safe in this community. So, I am very happy and proud to say that that was a decision that I made and again, we could have waited two more weeks, put it on an agenda and voted on it. But the commission that I had talked with, the members, had all said, "No, that's fine. They trust my judgment. That's what we did." And I believe anybody that says otherwise is trying to politicize this and make things out of this that aren't true. You know, I think one thing I read where somebody said they're just on as a retainer, they weren't doing anything, which is, again, it's not true. They've been working since day one. So, I... Hopefully, we'll get all this addressed so people can get this out of their system and we can move forward. We've got other contracts that the city's entered into for a lot more money that don't get near this type of questioning. And I think a lot of it, maybe some of the questions and some of those folks' defense that were asking questions about it didn't have the full information because they didn't, they just didn't have that. And whether they were lazy and they chose not to do it, or they just wanted to make a political statement out of it, that's up to them to determine how they want to proceed with that. But everything's been in the open. It's all been above board. Everything has been done properly according with all rules and procedures and statutes in the Commonwealth. So, you know, at that point, again, I've got Mr. Dunn and Mr. Hilbrecht on here. If anybody wants to ask them any questions, I would say too, any type of decision I make on emergency management procedures, I always discuss that with the city emergency management director and run that past the city attorney as well for any type of legal review. So, we're always making sure that we're doing everything that we can to follow all the guidelines and make sure that we make decisions that are in the best interest of the full community as a whole. So, I would ask if any commissioners have any questions, be glad to answer those. Just let me know.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, yes, I have a couple of questions. So, I understand that you may think that this is small or minute as stated. You know, that there's other things out there that are working and maybe there's some other things the community needs to know, Mayor. I appreciate your huge statement or whatever that was that you just shared, but a lot of discrepancies in that. As far as I'm concerned, I just, I don't understand. On June the 2nd, first of all, I did an open records request, Mayor, on Boxcar because I, obviously, I wasn't one of the three city commissioners that you let in on this. And even if I wasn't one that called you, I wouldn't know to call you if I wasn't aware of what's going on, which could have been handled by an email and that clearly was not given to me. And so, I did do an open records request because I wanted to know what information was out there. When I did my first open records request, Mayor, I received the total of, I want to say, 34 emails. When then the State Journal did a open records, Mayor, and they received the same amount. Then I was said, "Well, before I received the 34, you had sent an email to Shermae getting an explanation of what all information means." All information meant all information. That could be text messages, that could be emails. And then you were asking her to decipher between the difference between an email and a record. We know when it's all information, it's all information. So, then I received the 34 emails that I then went in. Then we received a... Our system did go down. I believe it was that Monday, Shermae, correct me if I'm wrong. So, it was down on that Monday, which was in that seven-period day or something. Then we received another email saying, "Oh, well, some of the mayor's emails didn't make it into this group." We then grew from 34 emails to 154 emails. Myself and the State Journal, which Shermae did send out to us, with all information asked for. Well, again, today, we receive an email of information that was asked for that came from Boxcar of text messages that we're giving. And I have one here. On June 2nd, a Boxcar rep sent you a text that read, "Just wanted to check in with you on two fronts. Did you get to sign the city agreement? And did you happen to touch base with the clerks you wanted to bounce our proposal off of? I am free until 1:30 and then tied up after 3:00. Thanks." This message came from a Boxcar rep. So, with that being said, it looks to be that not only is this young man speaking of the city agreement that you had going on, but it's also speaking of other agreements in regarding to the County Clerks Association. So, for me, Mayor, I'm trying to get an understanding. Is, was this a package deal for Boxcar to get a PR contract with the County Clerks Association as well as the city and spending our taxpayers' money? You know, I don't understand how this both is connecting, how you think that this is ethical and going forward? You know, this is for you. Like, why? Why weren't we told ahead of time when this message from this young man went on on the 2nd and I didn't find out really about Boxcar until July?
Well, Commissioner, let me tell you one thing. There's no other connection. The only contract that we have is with the city, with Boxcar. So, that's incorrect. Secondly, the only email that I remember talking with the city clerk about was, "Do I need to provide? Does that include Gmail accounts, personal accounts rather, that have the same information? It's the same exact email that went to the city account and is sent to a private account?" She said, "No, if it's the same stuff, you don't really have to do it because it's already there." So, that clears that up, I would think. Just trying to make sure. And again, I don't make determinations on what emails or any type of messages are released. That goes through the city clerk who works with the city attorney and city staff to pull that information. So, I believe, I think it's been explained by our staff that for some reason, staff couldn't find the total number of emails that were later released. I believe Mr. Hilbrecht provided emails that he wasn't really required to provide because he's not a government agency. But he went back on his own, out of the goodness of his heart, and did that so that we have all information out there.
Right. And I understand that and I appreciate that, you know, that explanation. And you're right. You know, the city does have the responsibility through Shermae and through Bobby of pulling those records for the city and getting them to us, and that is correct. However, the emails that I received today have william.may59@gmail.com. So, that would be your responsibility, Mayor, to be able to hand those over to us when we ask. And this would not. You're right. You know, I understand you had mentioned earlier in your statement or opening statement that, you know, we continue to go on and on about this, like there's something. We wouldn't have to go on about this if this was just all brought up in a manner of city business and spending taxpayers' money to let them know what's going on. And so, now we're trying to get down to the bottom of it because we feel like we're just, like there's blinders over some of our eyes to know what's going on, why we're spending this money. And I understand June 1st, you know, is when the starting contract was, and you're saying that it was unrest. But you were just saying, the last time we spoke, it said, you know, I have another thing that, you know, you had quoted in the paper that Boxcar was to help with the COVID. And unrest. So, you know, it seems like we're going back and forth and maybe it's both in a roundabout way. But again, I've asked for information. What have they done since June 1st? I've asked, what have they done for the unrest at the mansion or at the Capitol and whatever that may be? You know, I mean, we can throw it out there because it's a sensitive subject right now to do this whole political go back and forth. I just want to know clearly what they're doing, what they have done, and none of these records or the 154 emails I've received have shown nothing of what they've actually done for us except send you personal emails back and forth talking about city and talking about the County Clerks Association.
No, they're not talking about that. That was one email that he put down there. Just offering to help if they needed help because of the election cycle. So, there's no package. The other thing too is, like, when you reference a Gmail account, again, all the information that was sent was sent through the city email system. Some of those emails that the city came up with, they couldn't find all of those. I was advised by city staff that if the city email and the Gmail account were combined, that the city would be in charge of providing the city email account information. And if that, I'll ask the city clerk to be like, "If I've said anything that's not correct, city clerk, you can correct me if I, was that, did I present that correctly?" Okay, thank you. I just wanted to put that out there.
I don't want to bring her into it.
You actually did. You mentioned the city. You mentioned...
No, I'm being the doing her job, but some there's times where you make a difficult for her.
Okay. Let's don't mention people by name. You talk about the title.
Okay, we'll talk about a position. That's fine.
So, that's the thing. So, the other thing too is, Commissioner, excuse me, the chair has the floor here. So, to try to sit there and try to paint that somebody was trying to withhold anything is completely not true. And I will...
It was.
No, it wasn't. Absolutely not true. There was nothing withheld at all. The city city commissioners knew about it. And the reason that they knew about it, Commissioner, is because they took the time to call me and talk about agenda items, which we can do, by the way, before we set the agenda. We can certainly talk about agenda items and we do. You haven't called about agenda items and that's okay.
Are you serious?
Yeah. You've talked to me. Yeah, you haven't talked to me.
Yeah, because if you don't answer the phone, you don't recall messages.
That's not true. I do.
That is true. And I will pull my records for that just to prove that I've called you.
Remember one thing. We are under, we do have our rules of pursuit that we will follow. So, if you could just stay calm and let us all get our...
Oh, I am calm.
And I'll make sure that you get a chance to be heard, which is why we put this on the agenda tonight. So that you can go back and do your, you know, your questions that you had. But you're not gonna get to sit there and distort the truth and share false information like has been done previously. And that's, I think, that's where we're at this point where people thought that there was no information. And I'll let the commission, if they want to, they're welcome to speak for themselves. And I'll ask our emergency management director too, so we can get on the record too. So, I don't want to misspeak for anybody and certainly wouldn't do that. But our emergency management director was involved from day one on that. And I'd love to ask his opinion now. I think he would give it. So, I will ask. I'll ask Mr. Russell. You know, if I've said anything that isn't correct, please correct me at this time.
Everything's the way so far. Everything is what I recall. Under KRS 39100, you have the authority to implement any contract that you need to.
Thank you. And Commissioner, I involved the commissioners who called me to talk about their agenda items just so they would know.
Mayor?
Commissioner, what's your, Commissioner Tippett?
Uh, I think the State Journal quoted me accurately when they asked me about this. And I forget what the day the article was. And I was... I'm not sure exactly when all this took place in the civil unrest. But I think it was around the time of the hanging of the governor in effigy, somewhere in there.
That's correct.
And there were several marches in the capital city. And we discussed about, you know, while we are a small market, we are the capital city. And we had heard rumors about them marching on Daniel Cameron's office. You know, there was the tension. You could have cut it with a knife. I felt like it was, at that time, it was totally appropriate for you to do that. And it was better to be over-prepared than it was to be under-prepared. And if you recall, what I said to you, Mayor, I said, "I'm gonna, I agree with you." I said, "But I think we should have, we should exercise one little caveat here." And that is, "Let's do this, let's do this month-to-month, evaluate it at the end of the month, and if we don't think we need it, let's pull it." And that's the way I left it with you. And I think if you go back in the State Journal, you'll see my quotes are, they quoted me accurately. So, I guess, you know, from that point on, it really was your and the emergency management director then, who then became the city manager, it was in your purview to decide, you know, what the threat level was. And if you felt like, or especially the emergency management director, Russell, felt like the threat level was high, then he would communicate that to us in an appropriate fashion. And that's my participation in it and I'll just let it stand at that.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Tippett. And then, Commissioner Sauer.
Mayor, I think we need to put some things in perspective in this case, this particular issue. The Conference of Mayors, Mayor. Uh, the Conference of Mayors, Mayor. Uh, you attend those conferences uh, annually or is it biannually?
Uh, they have two, they have a, uh, a winter meeting in January and they have an annual meeting in June typically.
Right. You typically go to all those meetings, right?
To most of them, yeah.
And then monthly, do you not have a, a conference call with mayors from around the country?
We were having, we've had weekly calls since COVID uh, and civil unrest have, have been here.
And about how many mayors are involved with the, uh, Conference of Mayors?
Oh goodness, uh, it, it varies. Uh, there's a lot of times three hundred plus to five hundred people at the trainings and the, and on the phone calls from around the country.
Here's my point, Mayor. Of those two hundred, three hundred uh, mayors from around the country, how many would you say have a public relations firm that works with them?
You know, I know some have uh, they contracted, others have on staff, uh, you know, uh, personnel who do that on a daily basis.
Virtually two hundred of them, would you say?
Uh, I would have to guess, I mean, I, I, I really don't know.
Whether it's contractors, staff. I would say the vast majority do.
Right.
Person, PR companies that work with them. Uh, as, as pointed out uh, by Commissioner Tippett, uh, we are a, a special place in that we are one of only fifty cities in the United States to call themselves capital. And in conversation with you, I wholeheartedly endorse the idea of having a public relations uh, firm deal with the city of Frankfurt because of not only unrest, but also the national, state and local emergency that was declared. We had to be very careful about what we said and what, what we, a- and the way we would say, would say it. And therefore, that's, that's the reason that I endorse the idea. This is, this is uh, this is an awful uh, an awful attempt in indicting you for something that I think was well-serving the community at large. And that's what we're trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, Commissioner Waldo, do you have another?
Yeah, actually I do. I wanted to go back because you mentioned a good point about people not lying or, or trying to spread the true, you know, non-truth or what have you. So first I, I wanted to go back and, and piggyback on that and, and by all my knowledge of everything that I've spoken about, I've got in from paperwork and emails and things of that nature. And if I'm not privy to conversations, I can't speak on that. Just like I couldn't speak on the firing of our city manager because I didn't know the conversations you guys had. So you can't call someone a liar or say they're stretching the truth or whatever that may be, if they're not privy to that information. All I can do is make decisions off of what I'm gathering. But what I want to go back to also is, I'm very calm and I'm talking to you and I'm trying to get down to the information. So first of all, during this unrest or just any period, anytime period, I don't appreciate you coming at me like I'm not calm. You spent twenty minutes going over the community and treating our community, the first twenty minutes of this meeting, as though they're not educated and like they don't know what's going on. I don't, I didn't appreciate that. And for you to tell me calm, that's in other words, calling me a mad black woman. So I don't appreciate it. And it would be, no, you're interrupting me though. You're interrupting, let me finish that. I get it.
When you make inappropriate comments, I, I, you're violating our rules of procedure when you make those type of inappropriate comments and we're not going to allow them by anybody.
You met, you met an inappropriate comment is what I'm discussing. Please let me finish discussing um, of making, saying that I was calm and that is other words, saying I'm a mad black woman. We know what that means. And then I will further go on to say if that's just as unread, then maybe your two people that are on with uh, Boxcar didn't help you have a statement for that particular statement because it seems like all these comments are very staged to me. Um, but also in this, if and if you were commenting or communicating with Boxcar Mayor on June first, and June first, at that time, if I'm not recall, Shermay, Laura, please correct me, was Keith still our city manager? Okay, I thought so. So if this was such a high need, a demand for COVID, a high need demand for this unrest and all of this other stuff in Frankfurt and Tommy knew about it, three commissioners knew about it and you knew about it, why wouldn't our city manager know about that? So that was another issue that I had because he didn't. But our city manager didn't know about it.
He didn't know about it. We sent an email. He had a copy of the contract.
Okay, well, I, I guess that email didn't come through. So I'll get with Bobby to go back and search on that email. Um, but also, if none of this had anything to do with just COVID and unrest, why did the young man from Boxcar send you a message on why would you, uh, if, if you're involved in writing a chastising email to the city manager title, talking about Keith taking him to the woodshed for a good fashioned whooping? What, why would that have anything to do with COVID and why would that have anything to do with unrest? Because I think Keith's a Caucasian man. So I, I don't see that he's a black man to take out to the woodshed. But I do see that he's a Caucasian man. So I don't understand why, if you were only talking to Boxcar about COVID and about unrest, why those individuals, the young man that sent you the message about taking him out to the woodshed and giving him an old-fashioned whooping would even come up if that's the only two things that you're pushing, which you stated that you were. If we were in high demand at that time, our, we should know, all of us should know, um, to know. Our community is educated and, and Mayor, and back to, I guess, to end this is that it's an awful intent uh, to indict. Ma, come on, Sour. Yeah, you were one of the votes, so you had the information. But if you didn't have any of the information, you would feel the same way that myself and the community and the community also feel. This is wrong. There are other things to do with five thousand dollars a month. And I've still, I, and I'm not sure, Mayor, maybe they just report to you, Boxcar just reports to you, but I thought they were hired by the city. But maybe they just report to you because I've made, I've made several phone calls to Boxcar. I've left one particular message for Boxcar to get back with me and no one has ever returned my message. So we can discuss and answer questions. So maybe I wouldn't have to do it in this forum. So do they only work for you and only answer to you? I've tried because when I do call you, you don't answer. So I give up. And, and, and when you say that yes, they have agenda items, my agenda items, ninety-nine percent of the time, never make it past you and never make it on this agenda. So I have to have some kind of outlet to let the community know that I'm being their commissioner, I am being their vote. And I'm here to put their ideas and everything that they need forward in this city commission. This is not about you during this particular time. And if you, you went back and you even clearly said, you want to move fast on things. If it needs to be done, you want to move fast. Well, if I'm not mistaken, the last conversation I had with you and I stood and listened, you clearly said that you had a conversation with a young man in another city where they had their first COVID test. And you had that conversation in January. So could you not have warned us or come, or help get our community even more prepared since you knew of the first one in January?
Yeah.
So you're fast about some things like the firing of our city manager and unrest, but you're not fast on trying to make it where Frankfurt can save more lives and get our community ready. That's my final, that's my comment.
Thank you. I think we've said previously, Commissioner, when I was at the White House meeting with the mayors, uh, that the, the mayor next to me got a call and he actually had a, a, a person in his community test positive. That immediately in January, I spoke with our emergency management director. We had our first meeting to come up with planning. I think, I don't remember the exact date, but it was in February. It was our emergency preparedness response group that we met with and talked about COVID. So we were of the first, one of the first cities in Kentucky to be moving on this. We absolutely did. That's true. Uh, to sit there and say that I was trying to uh, insinuate to the community that they're uneducated, that's not true. The point I was trying to make is that uh, Tommy Russell, our emergency management team and myself are trained and certified in emergency management. We are trained and certified in public information of, of from emergency management training class that we've gone to. Secondly, uh, you don't, I, I have one phone call, I believe I returned to you. I don't know of any other times you've asked me for agenda items, except, except for back in June. I think we were talking about uh, an item. We added that uh, eventually because at that one meeting, we said, we talked about it. We're going to get a report from the US Conference of Mayors, which we have. It's on the agenda tonight. Just got it a couple of weeks ago. Uh, you, you didn't talk to me about adding anything to, to these agendas. You would, you would talk to others, but you didn't specifically ask me for something on the agenda. So I don't put things on the agenda if commissioners don't ask for it. City managers and the staff work on agenda items. And we, we look at those, review it and, and those things go on as needed. The other thing too is, we have to understand, I'm going to explain this again. Under an emergency declaration, we have in place a joint information center protocol. Meaning any type of public information goes through the joint information center. It's reviewed by our city staff and the, and the EOC, the emergency management team. A lot of times we run it through our city attorney if need be on certain things. And the, and the mayor under the law, under KRS chapter thirty-nine, uh, has the, the ultimate ruling decision of ultimate decision based on what the law is. And that is to make sure that we have one source of information going in and out so that there's no misinformation or information that would go out that would alarm the public and make them any nervous, any more nervous than they already are about situations. So, uh, I think the important thing is, is a lot of the things that you, you have said are not completely uh, uh, you know, accurate. Things have just gotten uh, uh, I don't really know how, but, but misconstrued. And that's what's happened. And I think uh, you know, it's, it's important to pay attention at the meetings. Instead of posting on Facebook and commenting while we have our meetings going, I think that's important to, to pay attention to the actual meeting itself. And then uh, you know, twice you've had to come back and ask to change your votes because you didn't know what we were voting on. The last meeting, you didn't want to vote because you said you hadn't seen information uh, on the CAD system for dispatch and on the internship program with UK. Both of those were on previous meeting agendas. And on one of those on the CAD system, you voted to, to, to purchase the CAD system. That was just a vote to issue the check. So I think it's important to, to pay attention and, and get all the facts and then, then you can make uh, you know, comments. But you know, we've, we've answered the questions. You get the open records request. Um, all of that stuff has been clarified. We've heard from our, our professional staff uh, about that. And if, and if anyone thinks that um, anybody's tried to, you know, keep anything from the public, you, you know, that's just not true because our uh, staff has provided to the best of their ability, all information and all public uh, open records requests that have been made.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for that. Um, you know, I appreciate you clearing that up and, and for the community or whomever is, is listening. But know that every little square that you see before that, except for three little squares and ninety-nine point nine percent of our community is not going to take anything out of your mouth against me and look at me any differently because I've given them no reason to why they think that I would sit here amongst them to lie to them, to you or anyone else. But your integrity has been tainted. And how dare you sit here and try to challenge me? Your days are very limited. And I will continue to fight for my community. And you can take stabs at me all you want. And, and let's clear, make clear, I got the information. I didn't vote on it because I didn't understand it. And I didn't vote on it because I said, I'd never said I didn't get the information. So let's clear that up. What I did was, I found a mayor that I did not trust as a city commissioner because you firing people and you're doing things behind the screen with your two other little votes behind the scene. And that's why I said I didn't vote because I don't really want you signing or representing the city in any way, dealing with money at this time because I don't think you have the city's best interest at heart in the taxpayers' dollars. So let's make that clear. So please, that is unfair. That is unfair for you to comment me the way that you have when, if I say something in Siglusher or I say something somewhere else, I'll tell the community, I'll talk about it. And yes, I'm going to use every flat pa- platform that I have, Facebook, Instagram, my texting, calling people that I can to make sure they're aware of what's going on in this city because you try to cut me off as you're doing now. You try to, you don't put my things on the agenda. Shermay, I don't know a specific number and Laura, maybe you guys can help me. Just a head nod would do. Has there not been several items I've sent to the city manager, to you guys and CCG that have not been put on the agenda? I don't need to know a number, but is that not correct?
And just please refer to them as their positions, not by name, please.
I'm sorry, Solicitor, City Clerk, have there been items I've sent to you just by head shake that have not been put on this city agenda?
Well, I'll ask it, Commissioner, some of the things you have sent to the city, you didn't send them to me and the city manager is not the person setting the agenda. It is the mayor, it's the presiding officer setting the agenda. Okay?
Yes, during the emergency, it is.
You got to make that clear. Okay? You got to follow the protocol. Those are the rules and that's what we follow. And then we have rules for reasons so that we can keep things moving forward and it, and keep everyone in a hopefully civil uh, conversation. And to sit there and, and question my integrity, I've been here for twenty-nine years and no one's ever done something like that beforehand. You know, you can try to impugn that all you want. This process was done in accordance with the law, in accordance with all procedures. Uh, in fact, the city attorney reviewed the contract with me. And we have written a notice from the city attorney that said that she believed under the KRS thirty-nine provisions with an emergency declaration that the mayor can make that decision. And I said, just because I can do something as mayor, doesn't mean I'm going to do that. And that's why the other commissioners were given that information because they called and talked about agenda items. And you know, that's the difference. It's communication. And.
No.
I'll stand by that. Hundred ten percent. You've heard all commissioners say the same thing.
Okay. Well, I apologize since that didn't happen, but sure, I mean, uh, city clerk and the um, and, and Laura, did I not send emails and they were forwarded to the mayor from you guys? Because technically the way, way we're set up on non-emergency is that the city manager is supposed to be over our agenda and working with the mayor because we never did vote for it to go over to the mayor for these reasons. And have, my question was simple for you, just, I didn't need a whole lot. Have I not sent multiple agenda items that have not been put on the agenda? And that the mayor received them through forwarding? I know it puts you guys in a hard bind, but.
I just answered that for them. I said that so they don't have to say. I said that, we were aware of that. But there were things that didn't need to be put on at the time because we were waiting to get information uh, to do that. And the city attorney is saying we're getting a few, far afield from the agenda because we're talking about other types of procedures. Is that correct?
It, I, I believe that at this point, we need to talk about Boxcar.
We can move on the agenda. The community has seen enough from him and, and we clearly know what it is. I mean, we'll wait for the State Journal to do their investigation. Thank you.
Anybody can investigate all they want, but Commissioner, I'm going to go back again and say that the city attorney, the city manager knew about the contract. They received copies of it before it was signed. The city attorney made some suggested changes. We signed it after that was reviewed for legal review. Uh, and the majority of us uh, have all said that this is important. You've heard uh, commissioners testify, not testify, but comment tonight and in the past that they thought it was a good thing to keep the community safe. You've heard our emergency management director say the same thing. You're the only one that seems to not understand it, Commissioner. So uh, again, that's why we put it back on the agenda. So we'll stay here as long as you need to, whatever we need to do to help you understand it, if that's what, if that's what you need.
Oh, I understand it very clear. Thank you, Mayor. I understand it very clear. And I just look at that contract and when you sent it to me, it's, it's sort of funny then. You know, if you and the city manager, the solicitor, um, and all of these people saw it, why was the date wrong on it when it was signed? Because it had a two thousand nineteen date on it. So not, not one of those people ever caught the two thousand nineteen date? I caught it when I read over it the first time. It would have been a circle for me, like, Mayor, you need to go back and check your dates. It goes from two thousand twenty to two thousand nineteen. I, I didn't understand that, but maybe it's an overlook or maybe just everyone didn't see it when you're saying that. I mean, that's, we can stay on as long as you want, but it's beating. People want to go on with this and we'll continue to investigate. I'll reach out to Boxcar and, and talk with them and answer. Um, I think Boxcar was on, if I'm not mistaken. And one thing I would like to request is just an update and uh, list all the things that they've done for the city of Frankfurt and send that in the email. It would be great. So we know what we can uh, talk about Boxcar and maybe celebrate what they've done, you know, and, and move forward. But that's where I'm at right now with it, Mayor.
All right, Commissioner, I'm going to respond. You asked for an open records request. You got all that information. So the information is out there. And uh, you know, whatever the date.
Still receiving information. This just came today. I don't know if you received it, but I think you were on the email, but maybe they didn't put it in your personal. I just received these in today. I just received these in today for this meeting. And why was, if we were going to talk about this and be open and honest, why wasn't this put on the agenda on Friday? Instead of at the last hour, making Shemay leave her home and coming home to put this on the agenda hour, taking her away from her weekend to put something last minute? Or was it because you knew we weren't going to be prepared for it? So you wanted to put it on and talk about it because you had Boxcar. Stage all of your questions and answers. And obviously, we can see the difference at the beginning of the meeting when you were talking, which looks staged. And you going around trying to deflect and everything else when you're answering my questions that Boxcar wasn't ready for. I'm just saying, but I'm still receiving information. So hopefully, again, like I said, I'll receive the Boxcar information on what they've done because I don't have that yet. Done for Frankfurt that deserves a five thousand dollar payment. That's what I'm asking for and that's what the community would like to know.
Okay. I I don't know. Again, I think the city clerk had said too. City I T staff. Was not able to find everything for whatever reason. They weren't, nobody was trying to hide anything. Staff just could not find it. So I don't know how much clearer we need to make that.
Well, I'll tell you how clear I can make it. If you knew that they were having a hard time finding it, why didn't you just print it out of your email and give it to them?
I didn't know.
Days. I'm just, I'm just saying.
Again, I don't see, try to grasp this. We'll say it again.
Please say it in my slow language because I'm not educated. Please, please write it down and send me an email with it. Maybe I can get it because I'm just not.
I think you've already gotten that, that. The information was requested. City staff. Went to work to pull the information. Asked the city clerk if I needed to provide copies of personal. Email accounts with that were also included with the city email account. It's told, we don't need to do that because it's a duplication of the same piece of information. So.
Okay.
The city staff. As far as I understand it, did everything they could do to be diligent to find all the information.
Thank you. Mr. Dunn and is that Mr. Dunn and Kirk? I don't want to mess up your last name, but. Could you guys, since you're here and and you're here representing Boxcar, instead of waiting on information? Could you tell our community what you've been doing since June first until now? Since you're on the phone here, could you share with us? What that, what what you've done from June first until now for our community? We would love to know.
Certainly, if I may, and this is Kirk, yeah, Kirk Hilbrecht, it's. It's, you can pronounce it, I mean, Hilbrecht. Anyway, Kirk Hilbrecht. So yeah, I've been with Boxcar for quite some time and I also represent another township too in southern Indiana, the town of Clarksville. So a lot of the, a lot of the situations or the. The topics that we were contracted for are not unfamiliar to us. And we were dealing with them in another community as well. So. It kind of made a lot of sense that we were able to apply some of our lessons learned for the city of Frankfurt. But a couple of things. Commissioner, I did, I did check my call records here because we are using a system that allows us to see who has called. And if we did miss your call, I'm not getting any indication that we did miss your call. I do apologize. But according to my records, I don't see any call from you or any voicemail from you, but I'd be happy to. Talk to you and give you my number after this is done. And secondarily, just to address something, we did not talk to Mayor May prior to this meeting in any kind of preparatory fashion. So. He is speaking on his own for this, but what we had done initially when we were hired, we were talking about the things that we were also dealing with with other clients to include COVID. Social unrest, crisis relations, press releases, media management and communications. So right off the bat. And a lot of these things that were reported in the in the state journal. As I have had a chance since then to talk with the publisher, Steve Stewart. And also Austin Horn on several other occasions, they agree that they didn't, they did not have everything. That was in fact. That was in fact worked on. And then since then, we had forwarded everything that we had and that total of emails were in excess of six hundred. But that also included red receipts and meeting invites and what have you. So. There was an extent, there was a sizable body of work that was not pulled from the first open records request, as you had stated. And so I again, I'm not, I can't speak to why that was, but I can tell you. It took me about two hours to actually send all the emails to the state journal. At the. Under, you know, because I was told I could. And it took me two hours because I couldn't just dump the file. I actually had to literally go through all of my emails and forward everything so that they, so that the state journal had. The original document that we may have modified and edited to the final output. So since the beginning of. Of our contract, we worked on everything from the mayor's comments and speeches regarding the epigee. To begin with, also when you all were, I believe, attended the march on Frankfurt. We also created talking points and also media advisories. To let people know what was happening in case the mayor had any questions or the citizens wanted to know. Now again, as the mayor had stated, we were following the joint information protocol. So we would, our liaison was Mayor May, and so we would give Mayor May the materials. And they would then be given to the J I C for dispersment. We also continued to work on other projects such as. See here. For COVID, as you know, with the the mayor on every Monday has a Facebook Live. And during the Facebook Live, we would be talking about, or he would be talking about anything and everything COVID related or even citizen. City related, whether that be opening up St. Clair Street or St. Clair Avenue so that people or streets so that people could actually. The restaurants could actually extend into the streets. That was COVID related because people wanted to have open seating. So. Everything that would be talked about during that briefing, we would coalesce anything that we knew about COVID. From our, from our vantage point and then we would take. Anything that the mayor wanted to talk about and make sure that we heard the same thing. And then he was giving the most factual information as well. Again, press releases, we did send out several press releases to the J I C regarding anything from the aquatic center being closed to. The Delly Graham Park, anything, any updates on that to. Again, any COVID related cases that you had or your first Frank first death or the first Franklin County death. All of these became press releases that we sent out forward to inform the citizens. To let them know what was going on. And again, to get quotes from. From the either the staff or from the mayor. And we also, let's see here. We also did, okay, a couple of public service announcements, both in print and in video. We worked with the mayor, I mean, he had a video that came regarding masking up. That we we gave commentary to. We also created. Public service announcement, mask up. Mask up, spread out, wash your hands, stay home if you're sick type announcements that could be hung in public places in Frankfurt. We did work on the and have been working on the social media audits as well as the. The web audit to let them know, as the mayor had asked, how do we effectively communicate with? All of our citizens. So we put that, we put these together that could be actioned by either Boxcar or another. Agent or firm as you, at your. At your, at your discretion. We also were always monitoring media outlets. So that, what that means is in case there's any mention about. Frankfurt, we were able to then quickly let the. The city of Frankfurt know that there was a mention in in the media. Let's see. Other things that we did, again, we already mentioned Delly Graham Park. And then again, anytime there was going to be like, we talked about talking points. So oftentimes when things would happen. Regarding whether a firefighter had contracted COVID or if there was. A, and again, any COVID related death, we would, we would come up with. That happened in Franklin County, we would help with any kind of talking points that could be used by anybody. In the city or on the staff as talking points. So and again, there, there is a lot of back and forth whenever there was any kind of information that would come to us that was. In a draft format, we would, we would help make it fit within the narrative of a press release or otherwise. And again, and talking with Austin Horn from the reporter from the state journal as well as. Their publisher, they did recognize that there was a lot of material that was pushed through the J I C that did end up coming to them. I would say on a daily or on a weekly basis, we had contact with the city in some form or fashion, at least three to four times a week.
You went quiet. Hello?
Yeah, I'm just.
Oh, is he finished?
Yeah, I think I'm finished.
Um, so I just had a couple of questions unless the mayor had something.
I was going to point out, going back to this, I was the person that pointed out to the city clerk. I was said when I saw the open records request come back. Initial that there was a lot of information that was missing and couldn't figure out why the city I T folks couldn't find it. So I was the person that pointed that out, that there was a lot more information. That should have been included. And again, that is not. Any way, shape or form meant to say anything derogatory about our staffs. I know they did the best that they could with our system that we're currently working under, which I believe that's why our I T staff. Has recommended we're changing our email system. I believe we're still in the process of that, last last I'd heard.
I have a couple of questions.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, one more thing about that is when I did talk with. Mr. Horn from the state journal, I did ask him if he would have. Given us the open records to see the what he had. So we could have been able to augment that. And he said, oops. And so I, you know, I think he, looking back, he said that he wished that he would have done that because then we would have been able to supplant any of the gaps that he had.
So I had a couple of questions. In regards to this, so there were, thanks for, you know, letting me know what work you were doing and what could be used. But I did you, I did hear a phrase in your, in your verbiage a lot that could be used. So is it fair to say that you are here in case we need you and you have been creating all of these things? But technically, they haven't been used for our public. Because I I heard a lot of that could be used. So I understand, you know, we could create a flyer, but has it been distributed to our community? Has these, has these, has this information been distributed to our community? Because we haven't seen it. I haven't seen it. And as far as the Facebook Live that the mayor does with some other officials, I mean, it looks like they're. The only thing that we're doing is really getting the new updates from our emergency management. And then everything else is sort of repeated what the governor says literally a couple of hours or the day before. Could you help clarify that?
Sure. So I say could be used because in in following the J I C protocol, we're not. Like I know from the beginning when we were sending out the the press releases, for example, to. Back to Mayor May through the J I C. Anything that we had on it that said, you know, from Boxcar had us as points of contact. Were taken off and used through, because it was going through the J I C, it made sense that it would have the head. The the headers from the J I C. So I say could be used because normally what we do, Commissioner, is when we are, when we send, if we're not going through a J I C. We actually would be able to see that. That news outlet actually had it. In this case, it was going through the J I C. So we were not. Again, I don't know if it was actually, we we don't know if it made it to where it was going because we didn't send it.
Okay, so fair to say that the work you're doing for our city could be lost in this J I C or anywhere else because it could not be possibly disseminated. And what we're paying for, it could be lost and that's not on your part. That's just being lost in the J I C. Okay.
According to, yeah, well, according to the, I'm sorry, but according to the, the, you know, the state journal. When we, when we showed them what we produced, they they agreed that they had seen a lot of that. They just didn't know where it came from.
Okay. And if if we pulled the public records, was that, is that not sent, is that just sent out through the J I C? Or is that not sent to our community to let them know? To our staff to let them know what's going out in Frankfurt? Do we, are we not aware of that before you push it out? Like, is there anyone in our city? I know you mentioned that that we have a late, the liaison, your joint liaison, of course, is the mayor. But besides the mayor, is there anyone else you're speaking to in our, in our staff, such as our own P R, you know, dealing with maybe Rebecca Hall? Or, you know, anyone of that nature that. Is getting any of this information besides the liaison as our mayor?
Are you asking us if we talked with these other people or we were sending it to other these people?
Are you sending this information to them before you send it out? Are you just sending it out once you're done? Or is there a process that once you complete, maybe let's say a flyer? Do you send that to someone in our staff for them to say, yeah, it looks great? Get it out there, go through the J I C or whatever that is.
Right. As, as the relationship was initially established, we were to go through our liaison or point person, which was the mayor. Secondarily, the reason why we set up the, we initially set up the Google Drive was so that. Anybody who of the city of Frankfurt needed to see the materials, they could.
Okay, could you send me the link to the Google Drive?
Certainly. And then once again, the the Google Drive is not comprehensive. It's not all the work that we have. It's only the stuff that was being worked on.
No, I I understand. And also Kirk, I'm not sure if this is a statement for you, from you, or if it was Mr. Dunn. But why do you think in the communication when we had a city manager that the comment was made to take our manager to the woodshed? Do we, is there, was there something you were doing research on? Is, was there something you were putting out for COVID that sort of added that in? Why do you think that that would have been made for our city manager who was not in communication with you at that time?
So that was actually on a shared Google document. So the actual attribution to that is unknown. I don't know. That was not a written statement sent to anybody. That was literally on a, on a working document that was within. The question of how do, how do we ensure that, or at least according to the the task was. Making sure that protocol is followed when it comes to information dissemination. From staff members going through the J I C. So to answer that question specifically, the attribution of who actually wrote that, I cannot, I mean, it's not known as to who actually wrote that. And it wasn't sent to anybody. It was in the the Google document, the shared Google document.
Okay. And it said, you said earlier in your statement that I I recall you said that he. You sent all of these emails to the state journal and he. And and someone told you that you could do that. Who gave you permission to send your emails to the state journal?
So since there was a public, this was for open records. It was understood that the open records request does not pertain to us because we're not subject to open records, but the client is. The city of Frankfurt. So we asked Mayor May if it was okay. After we had an interview with, it was myself, Mayor May, Jeff Dunn and and Austin Horn. During that, during that. During that interview, and we were going from point to point by point of of this contract. Mr. Horn had indicated that he did, he recognized that he probably doesn't have all the emails. And that he had already requested more of that information to come. And so we said. Can you tell us what you have? And he he shared some of that, but we knew that that was not the breadth of the work. So. But he said he was going to wait for the second records request to be fulfilled. And so not knowing what he had or didn't have. We didn't, we were not obligated by any stretch of the imagination to. To fill in gaps that we didn't know existed. And so he did not share with us what he had so that we could help fill in the gaps. But to answer your question, Commissioner, we asked Mayor May, hey, he's missing some information. This article went out. There's a whole bunch of stuff that was not there. Are we authorized to send the state journal the rest of the stuff that he's missing? And Mayor May said, yes.
Okay, I'm going to cut it up because I've gone way beyond what I would normally let people do in terms of this cross examination. So I wanted to go ahead and let, do a little bit extra because. Mr. Hilbrecht and Mr. Dunn said they would be okay with that, but. To be consistent, we've gone way beyond, I normally allow those two types of questions. And if they're pointed, then we we don't do that, but. Hopefully, if there's any additional questions that commissioners want. But hopefully, if there's any additional questions that commissioners want, please feel free to send them in writing and those will be answered just as quickly as possible. Don't know what else we can add since everything's been provided.
Thank you. Thank you to both the representatives of Boxcar. Kirk, thank you for giving me some information and I'll reach out again. Um, thanks.
Absolutely. And any commissioner that wants to talk to him, they'll be glad to do it.
Mayor, Mayor, this is Jeff. I'd just like to say one thing. We were hired by the city of Frankfurt and as Kirk said, our liaison has been the mayor. I've known him for, uh, since I was in the governor's office. I went through seventeen natural disasters. Uh, that's actually where I met Kirk as well. Uh, he was the PIO for the adjutant general, as it was said. And, and I think Commissioner Waldrich, I'm, I don't, and I'm speaking out of turn here because I.
That's fine, go ahead.
Kirk's the military guy and, and, and I'm not, but the, the JIC, and I think this was a lot of the confusion in what the State Journal said was a thin body of work. I don't think, and I, and again, I'm not wanting to blame anybody, but you all did not get the full body of work. And when we provided that, I believe the mayor was the one that okayed that. And I think he asked council's opinion. We were okay with giving everything, but I think the JIC was confused or, or the State Journal was confused because in, in certain instances, our name is on the press release and we do the sending. In this case, because it went through the JIC and that's, I think, made up of maybe five different departments. I'm not, not positive on that, but it's, it's a number of, a number of people that were on emails back and forth. But it went through the JIC and did not have Boxcar's name on it. So that's why the State Journal put out that, that the body of work was thin and they weren't certain that we were doing anything, which, uh, we of course take offense to because we, uh, we got a number of clients. Our number one client was a guy named Muhammad Ali. So I think our body of work across this state, across the United States and the clients that we have uh, in COVID as well as in just regular PR and crisis management speaks for itself.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dunn. I appreciate that and, and some more insight on that. Um, and I understand, you know, um, when you said that, you know, everything's going through our liaison, I appreciate that. Um, but was, was there any conversation with Keith prior to you signing the contract on June 1st? And it could be for Mr. Kirk as well. I mean, you're saying you're going through the liaison. Was Keith Parker ever in on these conversations where we can find emails or any, any cognitive, I guess, of Keith Parker being part of these phone calls or emails or text messages besides him taking to the woodshed?
I'm not sure, uh, city attorney might remember when we had a phone call. I don't remember if the city manager was on there or not. He was certainly.
Emails he was included on, yes. I believe he, uh, there was a number of emails. I don't have them in front of me. And again, I don't know, we, we were unaware before the state journalist Kirk said, before they wrote their article, that they didn't have the full body of work. They got it from the city. We assumed they got everything. We had no idea that there was an issue in the city's, uh, open records request. I never, I worked in state government for eight years, never had that issue at all. I, I, you know, I don't know, uh, but yes, his name was included. Did I ever speak to him directly? I do not, I do not believe, I never talked to him directly, no. But I believe he was on cert, on emails that, uh, that the attorney was on and the mayor was on. Uh, and, and Kirk and I and maybe others. But yeah, I, I did never had a one-on-one conversation or a phone call. I didn't even know his name, to be honest with you.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you. No, maybe those emails are still coming through.
And again.
We're getting all of these in bunches. So this is my last bunch as of today.
Well, if you, if you, I would, we would like, before it went any further, if you correlate those with what the State Journal has or if we're allowed to provide you what we have, uh, our body of work is a lot larger than what was reported.
Oh, that'd be great. I'm part of the city commission. So I don't see why you wouldn't be allowed to send me a voting member on the city commission and an official.
Glad to, but as, as the mayor and I think that the attorney said, we were unaware because no one asked us what was provided to you all, um, uh, or to the State Journal or to any other folks. I did not know you were the one that asked for the open records. You know, again, we have no problem giving you what work we have provided the city and are glad to discuss it at any time. And as Kirk said, uh, I didn't get an email from anyone, um, other than the city attorney, the mayor. Uh, I haven't received any phone calls or I've been glad to return them.
Yes, okay. No, that's fine. And like I said, I'll, I'll give you guys another phone call as well. And I'll look up the date on that, um, and, and let you know the date that I saved that message. So I left you a message. So thank you.
All right. Sorry, Commissioner Wismann, did somebody else have their hand up?
Mayor, I just wanted to thank you actually for taking this step. You know, back, um, after we declared an emergency, I had talked with you about my concern with the, uh, the city and our fractured communication system of multiple platforms and a half a dozen Facebook, um, accounts and, and otherwise. And I, I think this is the appropriate step. And I want to thank Mr. Hillbrook and Mr. Dunn for the work they've, they've been doing for us to evaluate our communication systems so that we can most effectively reach the citizens of our community to ensure that they know about what's happening and what's changing. And, um, Commissioner Waldrich continues to argue for transparency here, um, but that is exactly, in fact, exactly what we are. Side of the floor. We're arguing to do and trying to do here by using a PR firm with an experienced communications staff um, that we don't have on city staff. And I think we need to remember always that, um, as a capital city, things are a little different here at times. And we have, uh, the potential to have, um, impacts that don't affect other communities our size in the way it could here. So I, I just wanted to thank you for, for taking that step. And, um, you know, I have some other things to say, but I will, I will retain those comments. Um, but I am appalled in Commissioner Waldrich's behavior.
Once again, you're not supposed to use the names of commissioners. It's Commissioner.
Actually, I can, Commissioner.
You could say, yes, you could say Commissioner.
Waldrich, that's what he said. He didn't say Commissioner. He said Commissioner Waldrich. He said Catrisha. You didn't correct him one time. You interrupted me many times. I just wanted to make that clear that, so it's fair across the board.
What did, what did he say that I missed?
Um, he clearly called me out by my name, Catrisha Waldrich, and then he clearly called me Commissioner Waldrich.
Yeah, we don't read our first name. Call somebody Commissioner, someone, so that's.
To that, it was okay.
So, no, it, it, we don't use first names, please. And if I missed that, I certainly apologize to the, to the body. I, I didn't hear that. I'm sitting here taking notes and looking at, uh, full screen of people. All right, hopefully, uh, got most of the questions cleared up. And thank you commissioners for your comments, by the way. Thanks for your leadership. All right, let's go to the, uh, let me say this too. Divisive comments are certainly not helpful, especially, uh, during, uh, an emergency situation, dealing with a pandemic and civil unrest and economic downturn that we're suffering right now. And the rate of unemployment, you know, we need to, to pull together and, and pull the community together, which is what we're trying to do. Emergency management and this reminder of all the emergency management decisions go through, uh, the Joint Information Center. And we're going to continue to do that just as a matter of, of making sure that things are handled properly and that we don't give out false information. So if anybody's putting out information and it's not coming from the Joint Information Center, please let me know and we'll get that corrected and, 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 uh, we'll continue to move forward to, to protect our community. So I thank you to our emergency management team and all of our first responders and our department heads that are working diligently uh, at this time and our staff who's working to, um, to get information out in a timely fashion and as accurately as we can.
Yeah, Mayor, I have one thing.
Commissioner Waldrich.
I have a, a question. Since you're our liaison and this also can get an answer from, um, Mr. Dunn or Kirk, definitely. On a scale on one to 10, where are we and where does our PR marketing feel? One being not, none and, and, and 10 being very high risk, like, very high risk. Where does unrest sit for Frankfurt and where does COVID sit on that timeline for Frankfurt that you would say in the work that you've done? And the work that the mayor has approved as liaison, where does our unrest sit between a one to 10? 10 being off the charts, it's horrible, negative, and 10 being, we're good. Where do we fit in there?
I don't know that we can talk about different types of, uh, like the unrest type, uh, situation because some of the information we, uh, we don't have total information. We're looking at civil unrest in Louisville. Uh, we've had it in Lexington, all around us. Uh, there's, there's, uh, no way to predict at this point. We just have to be prepared for what could, uh, could happen here as a capital city. It's something we've got our emergency separations plans in place that we've had for years on how to deal with the response uh, from, from the city in, in terms of the police and fire and dispatch and emergency management side of things, as all of the other departments are concerned. You know, but talking about specific threats is something we don't do.
I wasn't, I wasn't talking about a specific threat. I was just saying like how, what is their work consist of? Like, are we truly at a 10? Like, there's something that maybe our community isn't aware of that we should be aware of, that is emergency, emergency? Or is it a 10? Like, where do we fall in our emergency line of where we're at with unrest and COVID?
Um, and again, I'm sorry, 10 was like, it's, everything's on fire.
Yeah, it's about to, yes.
Yeah, I would say anybody who's in public, uh, anybody who's in public office that has, uh, the responsibility for keeping the, the public safe, uh, as you have first responders, firefighters, police officers, EMS, and also being an elected official, you already start at a seven. You're already at a seven. And what that means is, and specifically because you're in a capital city. So you're, you're, um, things can pivot so fast. And so, yeah, for example, uh, the, um, the Attorney General Cameron actually lives, uh, literally in the adjacent neighborhood of where I am at. And, and we're very hyper aware of what's happening in Louisville. So what we know is whenever we know about, um, the, the case, specifically the Breonna Taylor case, even though, uh, you all, you know, don't have anything to do with the outcome of the grand jury, that will bleed over into where the Attorney General works. And so we actually track that all the way from, this is about to happen. And then we give heads up to the JIC of, hey, are you guys, are you guys tracking this? Is this something you should know, you know, that you're, that you know about? Whether that be COVID or social unrest. And, and social unrest doesn't just have to be, uh, specifically to the current situation. Also could be any kind of public outcry for anything, the economy or, or what have you. So we're hyper aware, we're always on and we're ready to go. And so we, and we take the, the collective knowledge of our other clients to bestow that upon each other client. So as I just mentioned, so to answer your question, you're already a seven. Uh, anytime you have anything else that's, that comes in, whether it be until Freedom or any other group, you, it obviously escalates or COVID or what have you, it goes up.
Thank you.
All right, uh, any other commissioners that haven't had a chance to? All right. Mr. Dunn, Mr. Hillbrook, thank you all for being on the call today. I appreciate you taking time to do it. And sorry you have to deal with, uh, a lot of misinformation, but appreciate your professionalism. And as always, uh, look forward to, to moving forward.
Everybody deserve.
Thank you. Uh, and thank you for your service to the Commonwealth too, both of you guys. All right, next item, um, emergency shelter grants fund authorization certificate of local approval. Now we have Ms. Hall on here, Mr. City Manager. Uh, do you want to kick it off? You just quoted Rebecca. I'm Ms. Hall. And you're still on mute.
I'll have to apologize. I'm not sure exactly the protocols associated with the, uh, with the work session. Ms. Ross tried to school me on that earlier today. So, uh, um, this is a, a grant funding that's been approved, uh, for a couple of years or several years. Ms. Rebecca, Ms. Hall is on line and I'll let her take it from there.
All right, thanks, Ms. Hall.
Um, these two forms are actually from the Simon House. They apply to the Kentucky Housing Corporation for emergency shelter grants. And in order to do that, part of the application is to get these forms signed by the local government. So the commission needs to authorize the mayor to sign both these forms. One is for the regular emergency shelter and then one is for Emergency Shelter, um, CARES Act. Both include homeless women and children.
Mayor, I'll move to authorize you to approve and sign the, uh, appropriate forms.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Wismann, second by Commissioner Waldrich. Is there any discussion? So none?
Mayor, I'll just say, sorry, I was just gonna say, I, I think we need to be very proactive in looking at the impact of homelessness and housing. Um, we've had a, a significant increase of recently and I think this is a good first step. But I, I hope we can work together to find some, some other ways. I'm, I'm severely concerned about the repercussions of COVID and how that's going to impact our local renting population and, and, um, those in poverty. So, um, thank, I'll just thank Ms. Hall for working with this, this group to secure this fund.
All right, anyone else? Okay, Court, please go roll.
Commissioner Waldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wismann?
Yes.
Mr. Sauer? Mayor May?
Yes. Sorry, somebody tried to talk.
Johns is on delay or Commissioner Sowers is on delay there.
Oh, okay, second. All right, next item, the CARES, uh, MOA and funds. This is to, um, go ahead and just document and file the appropriate forms with, uh, state and federal governments. So if there's any questions, we'll land some. If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Who'd approve, Mayor?
Second.
Commissioner Tippett, second by Commissioner Wismann. Any discussion?
Mayor, can we have just a description of what this entails for the community?
The MOA?
My, Mrs. Hall, give us a, or Mr. Russell, give us a description.
I think the manager, do you want to field that one? We talked earlier.
It's, 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 she knows the MOA.
Okay.
It's just the MOA with the state, um, saying that we will utilize funds, um, per the CARES, um, act that came down through, through this, from the federal to the state to us. And there are a number of ways we can spend that money. Um, either, um, there's payroll for our first responders, um, that's eligible. Also, um, any PPE that we purchased. Um, also, there's a small business grant option that we can use. Some of those, um, options duplicate FEMA. So what we had done earlier was go through and see what we could claim for FEMA and pull all that out. And then what we have remaining is what strictly cares, which is, um, COVID relief.
I want to share too, I had a conversation, uh, with the city manager and forwarded a question to the city attorney. She replied back, I was, uh, talking about, could we do a, when the eviction, moratorium was put on again, uh, that's put a hardship on, on some property owners. So I asked if we, could we give a, uh, some kind of a payout or funding to renters that they could go ahead and pay their rent, try to get that up so their landlords aren't left, uh, in a, in a bad situation. So we'll have more information on that shortly, but city attorney felt like we could do that. So we'll flesh that out and bring that to you at the first opportunity. But that just happened the last few days. Commissioner Wismann?
Mayor, I just wanted to thank you all, uh, you and, um, the, uh, Mrs. Hall and, uh, our city solicitor. You know, I've been asking since April, what can we do for our small businesses? I'm, I'm again gravely concerned about COVID's implications and I'm of the opinion that we're going to have to, um, find some ways to help sustain our, our locally grown independent businesses. And I think this is, just want the community to know this is the first step. And we are actively trying to find ways to use, um, some of this CARES money. We have almost $2 million here that we're trying to, uh, make happen, make work for, um, supporting those in need in our community. And we know it's been a slow, cumbersome process and government works unfortunately very slow. But, but I hope we'll have some resolutions very soon and we intend fully to, to support our, our local businesses and those in need in our community. Thank you.
So, there's no other question. I'm sorry, Commissioner. there's no other question. I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Ms. Hall and the Minister and the city manager get together and detail as much as we can, the cares we receive.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Sauer, you are breaking on us. I think you might. Thank you. Wanted to ask staff if they could give us a more detailed breakdown and when and I think that's what you're asking. Trying to.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I've learned to speak robot language.
Yeah. Are you good now?
I think so.
Are we good?
We'll have, we'll make sure that they get that information to all of us. All right. So clerk, please call roll.
I had one question, Mayor, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Walbridge.
That's okay. I think we rang in at the same time with Sauer. And so the amount that's coming, this is the federal money?
Correct.
What was this? This is the exact amount on the bottom of the contract. I'm sorry, Rebecca. Are you moved? Your square moved on.
Our exact amount that we have been allocated by the state is $1,990,298.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was the the total that I was looking at. Okay, that's all I had, Mayor. I just wanted to make sure that was the total.
Okay. Clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Walbridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wissman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sauer?
Always on a delay. Okay.
Mayor May?
Yes. And we can come back. What I'll do is I'll I'll come back before it's over and ask you.
Mayor, you recorded me saying yes, the last one.
Got it. I was gonna say, I'm gonna go back and at the end and make sure if anybody, if any member wants to change or be recorded as voting on an item, we'll make sure that we get a chance to do that if we lose you.
Yeah, Mayor, I'm just having terrible connection problems.
Sorry. Next would be the Frankfurt Economic Recovery Fund Grants for Small Businesses. This is a form that the city staff has worked on. Ms. Hall's worked on that. If there's any questions, we can answer them. If not, this is just the first step in getting things moving forward. So we do need a motion on all this too.
We need a motion, Mayor. I move to approve.
Oh, okay. Moved by Commissioner Wissman. Did somebody else jump in?
I did. I was I was saying I wanted to, I'm just making sure that, you know, the community.
Let me get it. Let me fill up with your questions. Is there is there a second on this?
Second.
Second by Commissioner. Okay, Commissioner Walbridge, go ahead.
Okay, I'm just looking over this and in the contract, the money for the Frankfurt Economic Recovery Grant Fund for Small Businesses. And could we just explain, you know, where that money is coming from and how much money is there?
So on the the we had budgeted $500,000 for economic funding through small for small businesses. Ms. Hall has done a wonderful job on putting together let's just say the first step or the first draft of this document that we would need to use to vet the process to get this out to businesses so that we were making sure everything is kosher on their applications. We have another oh, there's 1.2 million left as far as cares money goes. And then any number of those dollars could be put in the economic recovery fund if we so chose to do. We had a different plan to get it all into the general fund. And if we needed more money for economic businesses, we could we could certainly allot more dollars to that fund if we saw that the need was there. But again, I think Ms. Hall's done a wonderful job on starting this package and and it'll have to be a review process for us to go through to make sure we get everything in there that we wish.
Right. So right now we still stand at $500,000, though, with the possibility of the 1.2 million. Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, man.
Oh, Commissioner Wissman. Oh, we have a city attorney, okay.
Mayor, I appreciate the the wording in this document and Mrs. Hall, the way she's and Mr. Russell, the way they've established it. This lets us move forward with a process to see what the need is in our community. I've I've been calling businesses and asking where their sales are, you know, what the revenue losses are, et cetera. But it's difficult to understand exactly until we get a process out. So this is going to allow us to begin a process to see what the need is in our community. And I hope I can speak my myself, but I believe the intent amongst all of us is to come back and revisit what contribution amount we need to give out to our community and whether a $5,000 limit for a grant for each individual business will even do what the need is. I know this this document gives us the flexibility to revisit everything once we've had applications submitted from our local businesses for for grant funds. So I I think we have a lot of discussion yet to do. So I just wanted to say, community, please don't feel like this is maybe the end all of things. We we hear everyone's concerns and difficulties out there. And and I think we're intent on coming back and and fully vetting this even more once we see the actual need. Tommy, am I stating that or Mr. Russell, am I stating, I believe that sort of is the way that this document is written with that that intent that we can have applications come in, review and and see what kind of funding we actually need to
That is correct. I'm not sure that we need to vote on this to approve this tonight. This is just kind of like the first draft of this that needs to go before everyone unless Ms. Hall tells me this is the final the final document that she's ready to send out.
It was actually intended as a draft for the commission to give us any input they had for any changes, but we're happy if you all love it the way it is.
All right, well, we don't need, let's let's not, we don't need to vote on it then. Let's.
I will send my motion then, Mayor.
All right.
Mayor. I will say the drafting is well done. Mrs. Hall, it's like you were reading my mind. It it you covered everything that I was hoping we would in an initial program.
Commissioner Sauer, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, Mayor, John Center, President of Community Trust Bank. His office is over there on 127. Community Trust Bank did more of these type loans than any other bank in the Commonwealth. I know that from the Chamber of Commerce, and he might be a good person to just ask, you know, what type of form he used, what is most beneficial for most businesses? Just just as a thought, just to touch base with you.
Thank you. City Solicitor, you wanted to?
Just a quick comment. We had set this up as an executive order. So in theory, we would not need further Board of Commissioner approval, which is why we were talking about not voting tonight. But we just need to make sure that we understand everybody's good and you don't have any more requested changes. And then the mayor can move forward with issuing it.
Okay, thank you.
Question, question, Mayor.
Commissioner Tippett?
Is there a finite finite amount of money in this fund? And does it preclude us from making a local effort to contribute to this?
No, we could add, we could absolutely add more. There's the the federal allocation that came from the Cares Act. That's where most of this came from. And we just put it in the accounted in one lump. One pot of money.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. That's a good, I'm glad you clarified. Solicitor Ross. Thank you. All right, next item, open records request policy. This was something that staff wanted to put in place to help some guidance for staff dealing with open records requests and information requests from from elected officials. So if you've had a chance to read that, and you have any questions, staff can answer those. If not, we can entertain a motion or leave it on there for further discussion.
Mayor, I only had one one request. We don't have a timeframe for response listed specifically that I thought it might be appropriate to add something like a five business day turnaround for a minimum of response to say that it it may take longer for a commissioner request. But I wanted to thank staff. I brought this specifically to Mrs. Ross to clarify a number of requests I had made had went unanswered by our previous administration. And so I I thought it better for us to to get ahead of this and just find exactly how commissioners are to request information in the protocols and so that we remove some of the vagueness in the process previously.
Thank you.
Question, Mayor.
Commissioner Tippett?
Ms. Ross, is this this policy substantially amended or different from their current policy? And how soft it is different?
Commissioner, we don't actually have a current policy. So what I did is draft one, and it's actually pretty simple. If it's for city business, if you all need information to do your job anything related to public business to do your jobs, you just let the city manager know and he will move forward with getting it to the appropriate staff that makes sure we have efficient and effective process in place. Just to clarify, it does not preclude you all from filing an open records request if you would like for that information to go through that process for any reason.
Okay.
Oh, question, Mayor.
Well, we're again, we don't have a motion yet.
I'll move to approve, Mayor.
Did you want to? Did you want to change something? Did you say? That five day response turnaround or?
Well, let me rescind my my motion then. You know, I I don't know that that's necessary. It may just be a process that we can leave up to the city manager to define how he will respond to our request, I suppose, that would be the the more appropriate thing, given the the nature of request, it may be more flexible.
Okay, our our previous system that's been in place since about 30 years, thereabouts. On a service order, it's it requires staff to respond within five working days, which is basically a week. It could be, say, like, I need more time, or staff needs more time, or we we don't have the information, or we'll get the information to you tomorrow, that type of thing. So we can, we can make changes. It's an order, so it can be changed very quickly and rapidly. And a thank against the staff for pulling this together, Mr. Russell, Ms. Ross, and Ms. Maxwell for all of y'all's work. Ms. Ross, did you want anything?
No, Mayor, it's fine. I was just, I didn't realize we had an order. So we'll look that up, make sure we haven't contradicted anything.
That's okay. I think it it used to sit on the, this is how long it's been there. It used to be on the in front of the fax machine. It said when any type of service order came down from from elected officials that that should be taken to the city manager's office. And there was a process that said within five days, and it may not be in an official order. It just might have been a, it was just a policy that had been posted by whomever back then, because it was it was in place when I came on board. Because as you all know, I do everything in writing anyway. So this will so be.
Mayor, then should we, should we pass over this to our next voting meeting and let Mrs. Ross look for that if there is something on the books?
If staff's okay with, I think of them, staff really, they were looking for some guidance. I don't know if they need something quicker than we could amend it if need be. The only the only thing we'd be amending was like the five day response. So if you want to, you can just say tonight. I would, I would say too, I'm sure Mrs. Ross is going to look. I don't think there's going to be a written order. I think it was just a a policy that had been put in place back in the 90s, just to say if this, if the staff picks up something off the fax machine and it's a service order from the mayor or commissioner to just take that and hand it to the city manager's office or the city clerk, and then they decide it to the appropriate staff. So if it's in conflict with anything, I don't think this would actually be a conflict. In fact, if you if you change it to say five respond within five days or an answer, which means, hey, I'm sorry, I'm so tied up right now. It's going to take me another week. That's a response, I think. And and if that's okay with staff, let's say we're doing it for to kind of help them. So you can do it tonight. If you want to make a motion to say to amend that to say within five days, some type of response, or you can leave it blank and amend it in the future.
I'll I'll do that, Mayor. I would like to move to amend specifically to add that when the line that says exponentially slowly evaluate and respond or process a request within five days. Five business days.
All right. City attorney, city clerk, city manager, you all. Would that be clear? City attorney? Ms. Ross?
And yes, I just want to make sure we're absolutely clear moving forward. So you this would be to have the city manager respond to a commissioner within five days regarding the request, not necessarily to have the request answered within five business days. Okay.
Is that correct, Commissioner Wissman?
Yes, I think that I think it adds clarifies there to say just to process the request within five business days.
And if this becomes something that's hard for the staff, just come back to us and we'll fix it. Okay. So is there, you made a motion to change that. Is there a second on that motion for the amendment? They might want a second. If not.
Second.
I was gonna say.
All right, Commissioner Sauer, I was gonna let it die there. I'll say there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Hall is in favor of the amendment. I'm going to just go ahead and like ask a roll call, so because I can't really hear the voice vote if I do it over the Zoom thing.
Mr. Walbridge?
No.
Mr. Tippett?
Yes, and may I explain my vote?
Yes.
Uh, I just feel like, you know, we we're giving staff some latitude here. So if that relieves some immediate pressure on them, it's probably a good policy. Thank you.
Mr. Wissman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sauer?
I think he's frozen up again.
Mayor May?
Yes, the amendment is adopted. All right, next item would be the vote on the policy as amended.
Mayor, I move to approve.
Move back Commissioner Wissman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tippett. Is there any discussion on the motion? Not clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Walbridge?
No, I will actually explain my vote. Not I'm not against this as far as it making city staff life easier because we definitely want that because there are definitely a bunch of records just with officials that are doing that. However, I just think as we were looking into this, I think that we were I didn't know that we were moving forward. I thought there was going to be more discussion later and bringing this back to a voting meeting. And so I do have several different notes, but since we can do amendments and stuff, we'll bring it back. And if it doesn't happen in this commission, I pray I make the next commission and we'll change some of this. Thank you.
Mr. Tippett?
Yes.
Mr. Wissman?
Yes, and I will say this is exactly what Commissioner Walter just spent an hour and a half on discussing. This lays out a a very clear system of of accessing information from the city. We all have access to or should have access to all information that is pertinent, that is not legally bound by state, federal, or local ordinance from preclusion from us. So there should be absolutely no problem here. And and to vote otherwise is just another political statement. Thank you.
Mr. Sauer?
Yes, let's move on.
Mayor May?
Yes, that is adopted. Okay.
Mayor, I have something.
Commissioner Walbridge?
I I resent Commissioner Wissman's statement. And and every time he says something at the end, it's always against Commissioner Walbridge. I'm I'm tired of it. And this needs to be looked over and it doesn't say anything about personal emails or anything else. And if And if the commission and you, Mr. Wismann, was very honest with our community, we wouldn't have to do a lot of open records requests. Open records requests come at the hand of our officials, at the hand of people serving at the residents, because we feel that we're not getting the information. So we have to spend our time digging for conversations that you, Commissioner Wismann, or other commissioners and possibly the mayor are having offside conversations. So if this is something that needs to be, it really needs to have a whole lot more in it in regarding. You know, open meetings and conversations and text messages and emails, not just from the city perspective. I mean, we can go on and on forever. But then again, you know what? To be honest, we're beating our head with this commission. Like I said earlier to the mayor, you know. Days are counting for this commission and I pray the next commission comes in, they will look at this and bet it and things of that nature, because anything you put your hands on, Wismann. I just don't trust and I feel that it's always ready to cover your butt because there are a lot of things out there that you're hiding and that plans that you have, or wait, you hope to have. In the future, if you could be open and honest, then we wouldn't need to do open records requests. So like I said.
Mayor, may I?
Absolutely.
You know, Commissioner Waldrich, what you just defined is already defined within state law and federal law. This is just simply a process to define how we request information because it has been a difficult. Endeavor to get information for the last year and defining the process will hopefully help with that. But you keep talking about integrity and truthfulness. Let's remember, you're the only one with an FBI investigation for attempted extortion on this commission. You blame the integrity level of the other commissioners who have been with us for thirty years or more. Commissioner Sauer was mayor when I was born. Those in glass houses should not throw stones.
Thanks a lot.
Sorry, Commissioner Sauer.
Mayor May.
That's okay. I'm not offended. I'm not easily offended either.
Commissioner, Commissioner Waldrich.
You know, Commissioner Wismann, you can say a whole lot. You've already got yourself far under that really anything that comes out of your mouth. I don't think the community or myself really. Find any truth to, or let alone find any common sense to. And you know what? I guess I'd rather live in a glass house than my mom's basement. So let's not go back and forth with this. Because we can continue to dig and dig. And first of all, it shows how petty and how uneducated you have been in this process. Because if you read what the State Journal admitted, then you would see that there was nothing there. Nothing came out of it. I was, I was very open, very honest. And what entire happened in this situation.
Commissioner Sauer, where's your point?
And we continue to.
We're completely out of order, Mayor. Let's move on to the next item.
Now, I'm not finished with my comment, but you can comment afterwards. But what I'm seeing is that the common sense in this is that you bring up something that's so superficial that technically. I want to bring it back to who said that. Well, I know who called it in and the mayor called in that because he heard through the grapevine of what everything was going on. So continue to throw stones. But you and your little friends back there that want to continue to push forward, I will continue to do everything I can to fight for my community and my city to make sure. That the truth comes to light, no matter how hard I try. That's what I told my community and I will continue. So living in your basement, you want to throw a rock at me, please do. But make sure you throw it to knock me out because I am coming for you in any direction that you do.
Commissioner Waldrich, you're out of order when you point like that. So if you do that again.
From a local liar and chief, folks.
All right, and same to both of you. I have to stop both of you all there. Thank you. Next item is tourism funding request. City manager, I believe you told me Ms. Antonucci is on. It's not going to be able to be on the call tonight, so we have someone else that's going to make that presentation.
I don't see anybody else on, Mayor. She was going to try to get on and I know. Mr. Rippey sent her the link to get on this thing.
And Mrs. Renee True said he.
True is going to represent Ms. Antonucci.
If needed, so.
Yes, Mayor and City Commissioner is Renee True. I'd be glad to. Answer questions if there are any or give a short presentation if needed. If not needed, then I will mute myself.
All right. And I know the city manager that talked earlier and one of the questions. I think was, was tourism asking for contribution from fiscal court? And I believe the answer the city manager gave was yes. I don't know the same, same amount. I will let. Either Mr. True or the city manager make the. Presentation. Were you going to do that, Mr. True?
Sure, Mayor, that'd be fine. Downtown Frankfurt Inc. has worked on bourbon tourism. For the last four years in conjunction with the tourist commission. So I'm pretty familiar with the budget that she submitted. As well as the events that we're planning in November. It piggyback on some of the comments made by the commissioners about the need to support downtown and local merchants. The tourist commission budget is extremely stressed right now because of local transient tax. I think. The number Robin gave me was seventy percent down. And that's the majority of her funding. And so this is definitely COVID nineteen related. And this is also related to. The reopening of Frankfurt businesses downtown and to attract tourists. Specifically, the twenty thousand dollars that's requested in here for the November events. We're planning events every weekend in November. And so. City manager Russell doesn't have a heart failure there. We are working on having all of those events to be COVID nineteen compliant. With no events that require a congregation of. A large number of people in one area. So. The overall, the greater budget or the bigger request that Robin has put together here includes the Confined Bourbon. Consortium with the City of Covington and Bardstown that she's participated in with the last couple of years and she basically has no money to do that right now for bourbon tourism efforts. And a lot of the other things have come out of the Bourbon Strategies Committee, which Commissioner Tippett has set in on in the past. And some of the rest of you have been exposed to. And it also fits in with the bourbon tourism initiatives in the master plan. This is actually the first budget request that anyone has made that I know of. That directly addresses. The master plan as it relates to bourbon tourism. But a lot of these requests in this budget. Are also definitely COVID nineteen related as far as supporting our downtown businesses and our local businesses here in Frankfurt.
Mayor. Is Mr. True finished his presentation?
Uh, yes, I am.
I just have a. Do we need a motion before we have discussion? Mayor.
We have no, actually, vote on this tonight. This was just a.
Okay, okay, then I have a.
This was just.
Do I have the floor, Mayor?
You do.
Uh, just a couple of questions. First of all, you know, pre-COVID. You know, Mr. True was correct. I was and I still am on the Bourbon Strategies Committee and it was doing gangbusters. And it was driven by the energy of our good citizens. And the ingenuity of our good citizens. It was doing gangbusters and I. Pretty sure that COVID has put a cold towel on that. And I think, without speaking for my colleagues, that. You know, there is a soft spot in our heart for supporting this. My only question would be to be to the city finance officer and to the city. Manager, you know, do we have the resources to offer this kind of support? Uh, and you know, I'm more than sure. That other folks will come to us with worthy requests down the road. So I guess I'm kind of putting it over to our illustrious staff and asking them for their input. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thanks. I think they just wanted to get this on for a discussion tonight so that we could. Give them some guidance too. But Mr. Russell, you.
Yeah, I discussed this with staff this afternoon, late this afternoon. I was a little bit unclear about the total amount of the ask. Whether that was going to be split fiscal court and the city or how we were going to. Get there. I didn't really understand whether the, it was going to be a hundred and forty grand or seventy thousand or what. So. I just needed for us to have a conversation tonight to see where this went. And I feel like. We probably need to get Ms. Antonucci. On board on the telephone for the next meeting or whenever she's available again. I know she's gone to Oregon. Uh, just to clarify some of these things for us. Because like I say, when I looked at it and discussed it with staff, we were not. One hundred percent clear on the amount.
Mayor.
Mr. Waldrich.
Um, as I'm looking at the write-up, it says they're requesting twenty thousand dollars for the following, the seven thousand for digital marketing campaign. Three thousand for promotional signage and flyers and local print and radio. So that's quite a bit. Is there any way that, you know, with your liaison portion with Boxcar? Could not Boxcar do some of this without charging us another twenty thousand since they'll be here? I think that contract ran out to November first.
I would have to look at the contract. Just I don't know if that would be covered in there or not. We can ask.
I think it'd be good. I mean, if we need to change some of the wording in that contract, maybe possibly, since a lot of that information seems to be stuck in. In JEC and it's not out to our community, that maybe we can give them something that would come through JEC to help this situation and maybe not re-spend another twenty thousand dollars, but just an option.
Mayor.
Okay, just for clarification, this stuff is not stuck in the JEC. Everything that goes through there, the information flows out and goes out to. Media, media outlets that requested information and we push it out. Commissioner Wismann?
Yeah, Mayor, I was just wondering, well, first, let's just say that the Tourism Commission has their own contracts. And their own processes and procedures that they've already perfected to disseminate information and promote our community. I believe this is well within the lines and well within the request, particularly if we may consider using some of our CARES funds. Christmas is going to be critical for our local businesses this year, I'm positive, and it's probably what's going to carry them forward and help them recover. So we need to do everything we can. Mr. Russell, I was confused about the fifty thousand dollar request. Typical budgets, a hundred and fifty, a hundred and forty a year and the next year's budget's only twenty-three, quite a significant drop. So I assume that that is going to be. Fifty city, fifty county perhaps, and the same with the twenty thousand requested for specifically sort of launching the Christmas season in downtown. I'd like to see that. And also I'd like to have just a little bit more of an explanation of the events. I'm not. Familiar with what the Bourbon Ball Contest is going to be. The others are pretty self-explanatory, but. I'd like to have just a little bit more communication and I'll reach out to Robin specifically to see exactly how they're thinking about spending those funds. I would be potentially in favor of increasing even if there's a potential for us to reach a broader market or encourage. Everyone to be a hometown tourist for this season to support our local businesses. So. If you could find out that information or maybe Mr. True has some.
You know that, Mr. True?
Yeah, just a couple of things, Mayor. The request that my understanding, we were looking at the CARES Act funds for this. Then we're request was made to the county. The county has not had adequate time to review that. It was made kind of late in the game. It was made appropriately. City staff brought that to our attention and Robin and I discussed it. And said, yes, the county should be asked to participate. However, as we're debating this, the November events, which I can go into a little bit of detail, and I think what you all have before you has changed already. We did not want to. We were kind of shot down on the Bourbon Ball Contest from, I believe. But anyway, it's moving fast. But the November events, we have to move quickly if we're going to market these and. I would love to have the help of Boxcar from social media standpoint or PR outreach or whatever can be done. But some of the things in this request are direct media buys. Like airtime on the radio or State Journal buys or. Google, Google ads and things of that nature, which I'm assuming, I'm not seeing the contract, certainly don't want to start that. Back up, but would not be covered by Boxcar. So the reason I'm going into this at all is that. If you all can do, time is of the essence and the November buying season is what carries. A lot of the downtown merchants. I mean, I've heard as much as forty or fifty percent of their entire retail sales. For the year happened during the Christmas buying season. So I'm making that appeal as strong as I can. And I will be quiet.
That's okay. So. If we. Address this at our. September twenty-seventh voting meeting, is that still soon enough or you think you need something sooner? Based on the, on the buy-in time?
Well, we are working with some sponsors and the Downtown Frankfurt Inc. Board voted earlier this week. To provide seed funding for this to the tune of ten thousand dollars. On the hope that we're going to recover that. As you all may be aware, our budget's pretty tight right now with no sponsorships and no events. Because of COVID nineteen, but we thought this was important enough to go ahead and get the ball rolling. So we're not stopping. But I don't think DFI is in a position to. To fund the events. We're kind of going on faith.
Okay.
And. True.
Good question, Sir.
Mr. True?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. True, you have a, you have a minimum amount, Mr. True, that you think they would need?
A minimum amount, well, I mean.
Well. Try again, John. We.
You asked me if there was a minimum amount and then you started to add to that and I didn't hear the rest of it.
Well, we might add to that later. In other words, a minimum amount to start at, at least.
Uh, well, I would say ten grand.
Mr. True, this is all going directly to tourism for their traditional. Outputs of or engaging media markets. Is that correct?
Yes, I've talked with Robin about that and I thought that it was appropriate for all the funding to go through. The Tourism Commission and not try to. Cause any problems by saying, well, half of it goes through DFI and half of it goes through here, that it should. All go through tourism since it is directly tourism related. And also her budget has taken a more direct hit than even DFIs.
So the commission could appropriate some, I was wondering, what were you thinking, Commissioner Sauer? We could go ahead and appropriate. Some money tonight to get them started if there's, if there's a desire for that and then come back later and add to it. Was that?
Mayor, that's.
That's the thought, Mayor, and you know, the city manager had a figure of seventy thousand. Uh, you know, half of seventy thousand is thirty-five. I don't know where, you know. What the city manager thinks.
Commissioner, I mean, sorry, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Russell.
Thank you, Commissioner Sauer.
I tried to get something legitimate out of the city commission tonight and we might reconsider at our next meeting. Like, uh, Mr., uh, well. As was said, you know, they, they need seed money now. And so what do you think?
Yeah, I had a conversation with Ms. Hall today about CARES funds and the startup of. Restart up of tourism and advertisement and things like that. That's kind of a fifty fifty take on that, but we're going to recover the. That's kind of a fifty fifty take on that, but we're going to recover the the CARES funds anyway. I think that ten or fifteen thousand dollars to help get this started for the for the season for this fall will certainly go along and we can revisit this in at the next meeting or the next meeting even. I think that would certainly help the Ms. Antonucci in tourism right now. So it that that dollar amount that you all set is up to you all, but I think I think certainly that's in the realms of possibility. And we don't know what fiscal court will give even in their on their side of that, so we can adjust accordingly. I do believe that tourism dollars come back to us many times over. And I think we should support that, but I was just unclear as to the amount when we looked at this today with staff. So I know Mr. True is trying to do the best job that he can, but if Ms. Antonucci was here, it would certainly help us. So I think that's a beginning point for us.
Uh, good.
Uh, Mayor, it looks like Commissioner Sauer is pointing to a a compromise here. Might I suggest we have a request for fifteen thousand dollars here that are direct marketing expenses that are probably purchases that need to be made, I'm assuming very soon, Mr. True. And then there's a five thousand dollar request that is to print a dining guide. I would be happy to go ahead and approve fifteen thousand dollars to to cover the the direct expenditures for promotional flyers, radio and print and other digital marketing.
Okay, motion back, Commissioner Westman.
Second.
Second.
Second back, Commissioner Walbridge.
You can, you can have it.
Commissioner, Commissioner Walbridge. Okay, so any discussion?
Quick question, Mayor. I I thought I heard Commissioner Westman make some sort of a breakout there, a breakdown of specified amounts within the fifteen thousand. I I wasn't quite clear on that.
The the proposal that was given to us, Commissioner Tippett, has a breakdown, seven thousand digital marketing, three thousand for promotional flyers, postage and signage, and five thousand for local print and radio ads. I just assumed those were expelled in that way because they were timely. And there's the the brochure that's to be developed could maybe come back with the clarification of the proposal.
That's fine. Thank you.
Commissioner Sauer.
I just consider this amount a start. That's my only comment.
Agreed. Agreed. This is to get them something quick. Mr. True, do you think that'll be enough? To get started?
That'll, yes, that'll help us be able to start the November promotions. Just to be clear, we we are still working on the marketing budget, but we want to be able to roll by October one, hit the ground running. So this will this will do that.
Okay.
Mayor, just a question, should we clarify CARES funding or would that be appropriate at this time or?
We don't know. We're not sure that because it's it's a it's a mixed bag on that, but because we're getting so much reimbursement already and that we can use it to offset other costs, it's almost going to be a wash.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All the question, Mayor.
All right, no other questions, please call roll.
Mr. Walbridge? Yes. Mr. Tippett?
Yes.
Mr. Westman?
Yes.
Mr. Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor May.
Yes, that item is adopted, so we'll get a check immediately. Well, I shouldn't say immediately, but as soon as as our staff gets to work in the morning, they'll issue a check out at eight oh five AM.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just sped that up at the time, whenever they can, they'll get it to you real quick. I just wanted to get a reaction from Alicia Boyd. She was looking like. Sorry. All right, just have a little break. All right, thanks, Mr. True. And thanks to all the folks in tourism and all of our marketing folks for doing what they're doing. Next, Blanton Landing RFP, this is just a request for proposal. City manager has more information on this, I believe.
That's correct, sir. It's just it's a project that we've been working on. Everybody always talks about how we can best utilize the river and the riverfront. I believe Mr. Cockley has worked on this. He is should be on board and will be able to give us kind of an update and what we think just for your all's information, so we can get this out and see what we get in return.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Cockley or is everybody pretty, I mean, pretty much up to date on what we're doing?
I need some clarification, Mayor, on a couple of a couple of things.
All right, go ahead.
We had put out an RFP for proposals previously and had three responses. And to my understanding, well, two of them have contacted me angered that they didn't feel like they had adequate response from the city. Can we just explain are we? Is the recommendation here to go back out for response and see what we're getting after the consultants reviews some preliminary designs and make some recommendations? Or, you know, this this is, this has been a troubling project because I felt like it has been limited the information the commission's received in past. So I I'm at a loss to a degree. I've read the entire packet here and it looks like we're repeating a little bit of of a previous step. And I just want to make sure that that isn't the the case and that all of the three previous proposals had been appropriately communicated with before this this goes out.
Right, so if you reference, we previously did a separate RFP. And the intention at that time, as you all may recall, was to engage what interests private sector vendors may have in either portions of the project or programming they could offer for us to get a feel for both what interests the private sector had and for a feel for what they found could be viable, which would help educate us to to move forward. And so as you will have noticed when you read the RFP, Commissioner, we we break down for the respondents the multiple steps that we're kind of thinking through as we've done this. And so we got that information and communicated with those responders from the first one to give us a bit of an idea of what else our our position on the rest of the project might be. And so the purpose of this feasibility study, this step, is essentially to bring in a consultant, share that information with him and say, look, these are the folks that may end up participating with us on on the back end. Once we have infrastructure in place, if the commission chooses to fund it. And so what we want out of this step is to continue to work with those folks and other stakeholder groups. We've actually begun meeting in the last week with various stakeholder groups. We've identified the consultant and I to kind of have some phone conversations and Zoom meetings about their interests, their needs and wants, and just to get some general input about things that we may not have picked up on. And we'll continue doing that. We'll also be, the consultant and I will be filming a Frank Forward episode to kind of share some more information with the public. And hopefully in the next two days or so, have a project webpage up similar to our Tiger and Tiff webpage to just continue letting the public know what's going on and kind of explain just what you're asking, which is, well, we did this thing before, what is this thing and then where does that go? And so the short answer is the deliverable is going to end up being this feasibility study with some options for the commission to consider and enough information to have some construction estimates, operation and maintenance estimates, and enough information essentially to decide whether we can put bid specs out and go try to build the infrastructure so that we have an opportunity to engage the waterfront, improve Blanton's Landing, and then go back and have an opportunity for those previous respondents to potentially have a relationship with the city and and maybe be able to act on some of their initiatives. So, you know, we haven't left them behind. And in fact, those folks have already, I've made attempts in just last week to contact all of them to set up stakeholder meetings with them. And so that's I haven't heard back from all of them. But that's certainly what we plan actively to keep them involved. That's part of this, part of this whole thing, for sure. That's that's kind of what we want out of this step so that we can come back to you all and and say, okay, you know, if our if our role is going to be to participate in possibly constructing infrastructure, we need to know what that looks like.
Thanks.
Is that it?
Mayor, just a just a follow up. If if Mr. Cockley could speak just a little bit about and defined in this process, then the opportunity for public input. I've I've been hearing a lot of, you know, discussion in the community about different areas of the river that we might be leaving behind, the South Frankfurt Bank of the River, or that maybe we need to focus on another location. There will be some opportunity for some public input to maybe spur additional projects in the future or even the consultant to give us some recommendations about connectivity or things that might be future projects as well. Mr. Cockley, have you thought that that component through?
Sure. So so obviously, as you know, the community widely participated and and then I guess the previous commission adopted our downtown master plan. And this was one of those projects in there. And as you know, you know, the community has been pushing us to continue moving forward and not take time and not leave that plan on the shelf. And this is one of those projects. And so we've tried to continue moving forward to get you all in a position to make decisions about whether to move on it. But I will tell you this, the the consultant and I have already talked and when we've begun these stakeholder meetings, it's part of the reason is because while it's not the the main part of their work, we have talked about programmatic things and how does this interact with our other facilities and our other resources? So I'm sure one of those things that will come out of this will be that opportunity to say, you know, guys, in the future, maybe, you know, you should you you should add to this with another facility or something that we can consider, even though the focus is obviously this particular section and and finding out if this is a viable and feasible project for you all to consider moving forward on.
Mayor, I'll just say that my my hope was it is in good timing that we have the park plan going on as well that can elaborate on some of those programmatic themes in in this development too. And I'm specifically very excited about the the Ann Street overlook where the original boundary of our city began and being able to access more of the river. I just wanted Mr. Cockley to elaborate for the community's benefit.
Okay, I don't know, somebody's chiming in, I can't. Commissioner Sauer, I think you were trying to say something and and our city manager has got his hand up. Mr. City Manager, Mr. Russell.
Okay.
And I know some folks were asking. Right, when we get a second here.
Okay. Commissioner Westman, I I read the, for all of you all, I read the three proposals that we got in. I just felt like we needed to put this back out to start to put a dollar amount to this thing to see if this was going to be something that's that's a pipe dream or something that's way beyond our our focus. And we need to get Ms. Hall to go to DC or someplace like that to procure, you know, two hundred million dollars or something like that. It's time for us to start to put some some firm numbers together with this. And Mr. Cockley's done a wonderful job. And I was the one that asked him to to send this back to you all, just so we could start that process to know where we stood.
Seven ever. Question and break. Is that Commissioner Sauer?
Yes, Mr. Cockley, can you briefly discuss the where it's going to beginning again and where it's going to end and what's going to be generally included?
So so essentially, the focus area for the project is between the Ann Ann Street overlook that Commissioner Westman referenced and then down on the Blanton's Landing project where we have that existing smaller city boat dock and attempting to connect the two with some combination of floating dock and possibly hard surface along the the bank of the river, boardwalk, if you will, from that Ann Street overlook and connecting hopefully some of those properties and businesses along that Main Street quarter there to allow that that kind of action. So folks that maybe don't have the opportunity to get on the water can park in that parking garage and take a stroll along the boardwalk and possibly, you know, visit those businesses and support those those things and have a nice time, as as well as possibly being a facility where things like itinerary and boat slips can be available for the folks that we we've been told we have a demand coming up the river with all the open locks now or to look into other services. Once again, talking about just exploring programmatically, are there additional opportunities if our facilities were better for canoe or kayak rentals or things of that nature? But essentially, it's going to be a dock facility connecting those two points. And then we'll obviously consider any other sort of additional facilities that we might want to consider in a later phase and that sort of thing.
To follow up, I assume all of the businesses on south side of West Maine have been contacted as part of the players in this project?
We're in the process. We've contacted a few of the directly adjacent businesses. And then another stakeholder group that we kind of separately divided off from some of those, you know, we we grouped it first with those probably the obvious ones we're thinking of, those those directly adjacent restaurant businesses and things of that nature that are probably most interested in a connection to a facility like this as it were existing. And then we'll also be working as we move into the future to to contact directly all those those property owners that are directly adjacent property owners to to keep them abreast, obviously. And because they'll they'll obviously, if if we go that route and it's not a floating dock, they would obviously have to be willing partners to participate, so.
As you probably know, West Banco has a steel stairway down to the river behind the bank.
Yes, sir. I'm I'm aware of it.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Westman. And then we're going to take a quick break.
Mayor, I just wanted to ask Mr. Cockley, and I can I can do this offline with him too. But the the RFP is looking again from Ann Street to the Blanton's Landing. The the Main Street Plan or the Downtown Master Plan had some thoughts about connecting to the existing boat dock and connecting for the entirety of the the Commercial District. Are we precluding that for some reason or or is that part of our unofficial request of the consultant to look at in some manner?
We've obviously shared the Downtown Master Plan with the consultant as part of their initial data gathering. So they're aware that conceptually that was what was included in the Downtown Master Plan was to include that entire riverfront, as you mentioned, all the way back around if possible to the riverfront park. But for the purposes of this bite, back when when Keith and I started putting together the the even the first proposal and then thinking about how to actionably get it done, we we just started focusing on that area because it seemed like a bite we might be able to achieve between Ann Street and Blanton's Landing. And I think the thought also was that while it certainly wouldn't preclude a later phasing of that, it would in the meantime make sure that that we wouldn't affect that boat ramp and its operability. Because I think that'll be a challenge if you try to make the connection that the Downtown Master Plan called for all the way is that we'd have to think through boat access to that boat ramp and how that might be affected. So it seemed like a natural stopping point for this particular set to focus on this section. But not losing sight that the initial goal was the entire thing. But I I expected this will likely be a fairly capital intensive project, even with this section. That for better or for worse, will probably be a good enough chunk that the the commission will have to consider as it is.
My my concern is only that the only existing operational business on the water is the boat. And that I would like to see some inclusion or discussion with them about connectivity and and maybe how they can benefit or expand business. They already, as you have mentioned, have a waitlist that I believe is about a year for boat slips that they could potentially partner, obviously, with this this program and expand services. And, you know, we've had a, by some estimates, even during COVID, a four hundred percent increase of river water traffic through Frankfurt in the last couple of years. The the River Fest that we had for a couple of years, I think, helped expand that. And I just would like to see that that is not precluded if there's some opportunity to expand that existing business and and meet the need that is is already existing.
Fair enough. All right, so entertain a motion for a five minute recess. Second by.
Second.
Second back, Commissioner Sauer. All right, any discussion? CNN all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. I think that was three. All right, all is posed like sun. All right, we have three, one win no vote. So we'll be in five minute recess. Order, all members are present. So we were on the Blanton's Landing RFP. City manager, do you need us to vote on this tonight?
No, I believe we just need, it's just informational for y'all that we're going to put this back out. Ms. Ross, do we? Ms. Ross, do we need to, any other direction on this? Eric, do you need anything else on this, or? Any other direction? Do we need any other direction?
No, sir. We've got the consultant on and we're starting our work, so we'll just continue working. And, you know, try to keep updating the the commission. And like I said, we're we're kind of just in the ramp up data gathering, gathering and getting, like I said, with our stakeholders and stuff. So we'll also be working on, like I said, getting all of that kind of public information outlets, if you will, to the public on that. So y'all just let me know if you have any more questions as we move forward and we'll we'll try to keep the commission updated.
That's good. Thank you all for your work.
Absolutely.
Next item. City Manager asked about the parking study, RFP, that we needed to get rolling on that. So do you want to make any explanation on that or just put it on for a vote? We can vote on it tonight. We can vote it on it at the 27th.
I think, sir, that we just want to push this back out to make sure that it proposal.
I don't hear anything. Let's see.
We can hear you, Commissioner Sauer.
There we go. I I changed to my laptop.
I saw where you changed. I can see that you just changed over, so.
Yeah, you you know, it's Phyllis's laptop and, you know, it's Phyllis's car and it's Phyllis's house and and she has me, so everything is Phyllis's.
That's all right.
Fifty years and going strong. Don't shake your head, Charmaine.
Yes, sir, no, I I think we just needed to get that back out there. I know that it's been done and we needed to update it and it it encompasses quite a bit and impacts City PD as well. And I've had several questions asked about parking spaces and length of time and tour bus parking and and several different issues. And we need to get that out back there to see what the best ideas in the country are about how we should operate. And it would includes our parking structures also. And I think that'll that'll provide us a big, a big help on direction on what we need to do. Especially with the new development downtown, so.
Thank you. And we appreciate all the work you're putting in to move things forward at a much faster pace than we were on. We appreciate that very much. I know the commission. We appreciate that. Commissioner Wiseman?
Yeah, Mayor, I will reiterate your comments and thank Mr. Russell for our acting city manager, Russell. We've revisited this three times, I believe, over the last year and a half. I just had one question. This was brought to us and the way it was presented previously was looking more specifically at the parking garages that we have. We have a city leased garage that we subleased for for management that I've thought for a long time needed to have a reevaluation. Do we have a an idea of what cost to engage a consultant is looking at or looking like for this? Or are we? Do we have any idea on what that might? Mr. Cockley, do you have that answer for Commissioner Wiseman?
I don't have a direct ballpark that I'd hate to toss out at you. I'm I'm kind of curious myself to see, depending on the scope of services they come back with. You know, it's kind of a wide ranging thing we're asking here for in terms of the garage, parking management, parking information outlet, parking maps, strategy for the different parking users, you know, all the things we learned from our parking survey were what kind of led us to to write this RFP months ago when we finished writing it. So we we just, you know, the world went crazy since then and had other priorities, obviously. And so we're happy to kind of put this thing out there and hopefully there's an affordable way to move forward with somebody and really wrap around our our heads around the parking situation and utilization of those garages and an enforcement strategy that's that's fair, but also hopefully can push the users to to park in the places we'd like them to, to maximize our our best parking spaces. And as Tommy mentioned, you know, if if our momentum and development continues and and parcel B happens, parking will become even more important for us to manage appropriately, so.
Well, at at timing with the parcel B developments, I assume that a a study is is fitting, that it will inform or help inform what exactly that public parking garage becomes. And I do hope we'll we'll maybe make some efforts to talk with the state more about using their facilities that sit empty. You know, all every night and weekend, so. Thanks.
Anyone else? All right, thank you. Mr. Russell, you'll just let us know when you're ready to, if we need to take any action. At the commission level, I think. All right, next item. This is a golf cart ordinance discussion. And we can give it a reading tonight. And if commission is ready for that, this was at the request of, no, we're shaking their head.
I think that this is for review, Mayor, for you all to review. Chief Adams and Ms. Ross have been looking at this thing and I I think that we need to establish parameters and Chief Adams needs the specifics for this thing. And Ms. Ross, so Ms. Ross, so we can have direction on how to write the ordinance if if we choose to do so. This is not a have to thing. It's a question that was brought up. And we needed it put before you all to bring your attention to it.
Commissioner Tippett?
Kind of consider myself to be some of an expert on writing a golf cart. I can understand clearly why folks would want this to go. It probably would create a buzz in the urban core, which is what we all want. But we need to be very careful about what we decide to do as far as safety. A golf cart does not go very fast. And they can tip over. I have been in several golf carts that have tipped over on a golf course. So I'm just saying to staff, while we should pursue this, we need to make really sure that we got our ducks in a row on this. You know, some of the safety issues just jump at me. Especially on, you know, busy, busy urban streets. So while I'm not opposed to it, and I think it could be a good a good thing, we need to make sure we do this right. So take all the time you need, staff. Collect all the data that you need before you bring us any kind of recommendation. And it may very well be that you bring your recommendation to the next board. It may take you that much time to collect the data. So I just, that's a little bit of a of a caveat and a little bit of, you know, let's just do this carefully. Thank you.
Mayor?
Commissioner Sauer.
Mayor, I I agree, of course, with Commissioner Tippett. And I think every safety precaution that we can imagine ought to be included, whether it's flags or fluorescent fluorescent signs on the back and front of the certain restrictions. I know one of them was going to be 25 or 35 miles an hour. It would be the limit. I also know that I believe Lawrenceburg and Danville, I think, are two case studies that we can reach out to to find out any other things that we can do to make the vehicles safer. I do think they provide a convenient mode of transportation for some people that are less mobile than we might be. And I think it would create a buzz, as Commissioner Tippett mentioned, or in downtown. We'd have to restrict it to downtown and not the hills of rolling acres. Thank you.
Mayor. Yeah, Mayor, I would just want to thank Ms. Ross again for bringing this forward. We had asked about this almost over a year ago, I believe, and it was predicated primarily, if you'll remember, on a a local charitable group wanting to be able to use golf carts to serve meals to needy citizens rather than having to go through the great expense of owning a vehicle or some car service. Since then, of course, we've just had a a new golf cart rental business open in town and another golf cart business that seems to be doing pretty well. So I think it's it's pertinent for us to consider for tourism benefits alone that there's been discussion for years about being able to have a a multi-vehicle golf carts type of of vehicle that could take people from downtown to Buffalo Trace or to the cemetery and maneuver some of the the roads more easily than than can with a car in a group. Tour buses, we all know, can enter into the cemetery. So that's been one pointed discussion. So I'd like us to move forward with our research and and Danville, I understand, recently updated their restrictions. There there has to be a caveat that these are road safe and, you know, to the same standard as all vehicles. And many communities limit them to the daytime hours, I understand. I think we can find a way that safely addresses all the community's issues, safety concerns, and allows us to have the benefits, which I I believe there would be a great benefit for particularly for the downtown, for for future tourism. And and maybe we could retain some of our golfing enthusiasts, Mr. Tippett, like Port St. Joe or Appalachia Cola do, that everyone owns a golf cart, right? And and maneuvers the downtown very effectively to run their errands in that manner instead of, you know, moving a big vehicle and taking up valuable street parking for tourists and and things like that, so. I think it seems to be some agreement to move forward as cautiously but expeditiously as we might.
Mayor?
Commissioner Waldrich?
I would agree as well. I remember having this conversation a little while ago, definitely, when it's it was coming up. I wasn't for sure that it was a nonprofit, but some people, some developers and business owners and and people that live downtown are interested in this. And I think one of the concerns that I definitely shared with Keith was that parking, you know, for these particular golf carts and how does that go? Because we already have parking issues. So definitely want to make sure that that's on the site as well to where, you know, when we're doing this, where could they park? Or I got a suggestion from one of the developers that, you know, it could be a possible location where golf carts only park and then maybe, you know, toward Blantons Landing or something of that nature to where maybe the trolley can, you know, make stops over there to bring them, you know, over. So just want to make sure that we keep all of that in 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 our in the forefront of our minds when doing this, but also, you know, sort of include the downtown businesses as well as some developers and and homeowners down in that area on their on their concerns and maybe some of their ideas as well.
All right, any, Commissioner Wiseman?
Mayor, yeah, I just wanted to ask Ms. Ross and Mr. Adams. They've been researching and looking at other communities, if there are glaring issues or or things that we might need to consider or any of your recommendations, sorry, recommendations.
Do you want to go ahead, Chief Adams?
All I can say, I did reach out to some different communities that I knew, I didn't realize until tonight that Lawrenceburg and Danville had, and I I know those chiefs pretty well, so I've reached out to them now. But the two responses I got so far, Boone County Sheriff, he he says it's working great for them. Their real problem or only problem that they have is juveniles who aren't supposed to be on them. Because the more readily available they are, we, you know, we don't allow them now, but last week we had a a golf cart with two 12-year-olds in it that caused a lot of property damage. So that is one of the major concerns. The other place was Shepherdsville and from what the police chief there said, they they haven't had anybody apply for. Once they knew they had to have them inspected and had to have other safety features put on them and that type of thing, they they've had no one actually apply for a permit for their golf cart. So those are the two I actually got responses from. And I'll, like I said, I'll reach out to Chief Gray in Danville and Chief Taylor down Lawrenceburg and see what their what their experiences have been so far.
And from my perspective, I've talked with, excuse me, I've talked with numerous city attorneys around the state. I've received some mixed reviews, but I would say definitely I've seen a lot of communities that have had golf cart ordinances and actually ended up repealing them because they did not work within their communities. That's why I do think it requires a a lot of review, a lot of decision making. I appreciate actually the comments regarding involving some of the key stakeholders that might be you know, and mostly involved on the roads where we might have it. What we'll definitely need from you all is direction on the hours of operation, what you would like. Also, the streets, the particular streets that you would like. Because those will have to be integral parts of the draft and without a little direction, I'm not, I'm not sure where to go. We can try to put something together and see what you think based on other communities that focuses on the downtown. But I would definitely want a full discussion on the exact terms of the ordinance before I presented you all with a final legal first draft. First reading.
Laura, could I ask a follow up just quickly? State requirements, I know we we discussed that last year, that there previously, we believe golf carts were allowed on on streets under 30. Was that right? And there was a state change. So what what requirements are are impressed upon us that can can we allow any streets or is it only those those unmarked residential lower mileage areas?
So basically, it has to, the golf cart itself has to operate at 35 miles an hour or less. And then we've also got the requirement, I'm looking through the statute, it's a little bit long. I was trying to find the one on the actual.
And they're not allowed to cross higher speed highways. Must there be retained? No crossing.
I'm sorry, Commissioner. Yes, and they cannot cross a roadway at an intersection where that roadway being crossed as opposed to its speed limit of more than 35 miles per hour. So 35 miles per hour and no cross streets over that. There are a lot of requirements designed to, there are a lot of inspection requirements. We'll have to come up with a fee system, a permit system, who's going to actually issue the permits from the city? Do we want to talk to the sheriff about certain things? There are a lot of considerations. It'll take a little while, even after we get an ordinance in place, to get it up and going with all of the multiple steps that folks will have to go through.
Laura, just a one last follow up. Have you encountered any communities that maybe limit this for the usage for only business purposes or or maybe nonprofits as businesses? And maybe that's the way we we look at it specifically for for tourism efforts and for meeting things like the feeding the the community?
I think. Yes, Commissioner, I think from my conversations with other city attorneys, that might be a good entry point into the golf cart realm is to start with those businesses and and tourism and things like that and see how it goes. It might be a good idea to restrict it and and see what we need to work on if we're going to open it up further.
After hearing that, that that sort of is where my my thought process has been going, that maybe we should explore that first and see if there's potential for for businesses to lease for recreation or for tourism efforts. You know, we had Urban on the Banks last year and we used a whole fleet of golf carts to to make that event happen. And we had to have some special dispensations to to allow that. So I I think it would be us to maybe start that way and begin the process.
Okay, any other comments on this?
One more, Mayor, for me. It's just, when would you all like this back before you? With a first draft, more than likely.
Ms. Ross? Yeah, Mayor? I I think that really is in your purview. You need to do the complete and thorough job and research it. And when you think you have it ready, you should bring it to us. I don't think we should have any sort of you know, forced timeline on that. And this board should, and I'm, I reiterate what I said. The safety, the safety part is a pretty imminent issue. So if you don't feel like, you know, you have enough enough data that you can make a recommendation for that, then you probably shouldn't make that recommendation.
All right, anyone else?
Ms. Ross, maybe we can, any of us that have contacts with folks that have been interested, maybe we can refer them to you. And you can at least do a preliminary discussion and and then give us some thoughts or desires of the community, maybe, before we we jump into drafting an ordinance. Maybe that would be most expeditions in in a couple of months or something.
All right, anyone else? All right. Let's see. Next item. Next item sidewalks, paving and potholes.
Yes, sir. Ms. Katie Beard is on the on the line. I've I've had a conversation. With Ms. Hecker, uh, we're gonna push back out the pothole. Media campaign again to start. I would remind that. These these dollars do go until July 1 or June 30. Whichever one Ms. Beard, so we're gonna try to try to save a little bit of money for the springtime while pushing forward with. The ability to spend and repair sidewalks and resurface roadways, but. Uh, Ms. Beard is on the line and she can expand on that further.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Beard.
Okay, so potholes are repaired in-house by our staff. Um, we typically just take complaints from customers. Um, so we address those as they come in. What we've been talking about with Ms. Hecker is doing an outreach. To give people kind of a hotline number and an email address that they can. Notify us, kind of just do an outreach and try to get a whole. Picture of the city and the pothole situation all at once. And address that now while the plants are still open. Um. Also, just to give you a brief update on where we are on paving and sidewalks as well, if that's okay.
Yes, please.
The paving contracts, we have one with Randall Davies Company and one with Flynn Brothers. We're coordinating right now with them to get them started. It looks like both of them are going to have availability here by October. We're going to do in in lieu of a public meeting, since we can't meet right now. We are going to do an outreach. Online, we're going to post our list, our paving lists. And our street lists are subject to change based on information that comes to us. If it's the condition of the streets. Or the fact that maybe a utility is going to do some repairs there, we would push that street back. But we're going to publish those lists online along with a brief presentation. And open it up for public comment for at least seven days. And so we're right now working on. The public notice for that. So as soon as we get that out, we're hoping to push that forward next week. Uh, and I can also send you all these pavement. Paving lists if you'd like as well.
Okay, yes, please.
Okay, I will do that.
Mayor.
Um, I already recognized Commissioner Sauer, then your Commissioner Walbridge.
Thank you.
Katie, uh, and. Well, Katie, one thing that I wanted to emphasize, and I'm sure you will in your. Uh, PSAs and your online comments and so forth is to stress. City maintained streets. We're not looking obviously at US 60, 127, 420 and so forth. Um, because I I know we'll still get. Uh, potholes, we'll still get pavement requests, we'll still get. Uh, sidewalk repair for all of those locations. Uh, but you know, the more we can say and specify city maintained. Uh, the better, I think, in our communication.
Okay, yes, good point.
Commissioner Walbridge.
Um, Ms. Beard, um, I know I've spoken with staff already on some things, but. Regarding the Collins Lane area, I know they've finished the sewer project. Is there any more utilities that are going to happen on Collins Lane? And do we have an expect date, expectation date of if no utilities are doing any other things, when that will start paving?
Yes, um. We have been in communications with Columbia Gas. They're going to fast track a few repairs that they have to do. Those repairs will be just outside of the area that the storm sewer project just completed. So. We hope to. Get that paved ASAP. Even getting that milled later this week and paved next week possibly. Um, but once we have a firm date, we will let you all know.
Okay, thank you. And follow up on that is with Capitol Hill with the East Main Hill going down. Uh, town, I know that we were finished with utilities. However, they're fixing the drainage boxes right now. And I think Tommy had let me know that there was about 10 at the time we spoke. I think there was about four done. It looks like they're on the other side of the road. Um, I know that they've been given a 90 day contract. You know, where are we in that 90 day contract? I did happen to drive up today to take a look to see where they are and it looks like they're really gutting out the last few boxes. Uh, some of them look like they're ready to be poured as far as concrete's concerned. When is that 90 days up? Uh, for their contract and have they given us a date that could solidify when that paving would start on the hill?
Yes, Chuck Knowles has actually been the project manager for that one, and I'm sorry, I don't know the date off the top of my head, but it is going ahead of schedule. They are moving along faster than anticipated and we're hoping that the state can get that paved this year.
Commissioner.
Thank you.
Swald, you think, okay, Commissioner Wismann?
I just got my pen. Um, yeah, Mayor, thank you. I I just wanted to echo some of Commissioner Sauer's comments. Um, that that my concern has been, and I'd love for us to see how we could create maybe an interactive map. Of some sorts on our website where people could regularly report issues and better understand. The maze that is city, county, state roads and even federal highways. Um, you can be at in front of my house down on Lewis Street where I live downtown. Um, and be on the sidewalk and be looking at three separately maintained streets there. Um, you know, state and federal and or state and and local and and county just over the hill. So. I don't know if we could come up with some part of of your your push out. That it does exactly that, that really dictates to the community exactly who maintains what. And that you could still report things to us, of course, and and we can push those on. Um, but also what streets we have ready for paving. I know Ms. Beard and I talked earlier a few months ago. About some downtown concerns and street, there's a an area that consistently crumbles and that we were waiting for some. Construction in the area, but that's on the paving schedule this year. My street has a problematic area on Lewis that has. That schedule, but if if we can go ahead and put out the schedule so that people know that those are. Are areas that are going to be maintained already on the plan and. You all have been fantastic in last year before the plants closed about. Sort of expanding to some of the problematic areas throughout the city. And I'm sure we can. Try to do so again, but it would be good to have some some regular way that the community can report the the issues. To us, I'm not sure how how best we can make that happen.
Mayor.
One second, lost my screen. There we go, Commissioner Tippett.
Uh, Ms. Beard. Uh, I've been made aware of two gigantic potholes. On West Campbell. One in the middle of West Campbell and one in the intersection of Conway and West Campbell. Uh, I'm told they're just, they're monstrous. Uh, these are reports from citizens. So if we could do that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
We can.
All right, city manager, Mr. Russell.
Thank you, sir. Uh. Commissioner Wismann, go back to your comments. I've already had a conversation with the. With our IT, with Mr. Rippey about, because we have so many streets closed to construction all the time. If we could come up with an interactive map. Uh, that the city, that any citizen could click on. Uh, whether it's the city's website or. Ready Frankfurt or whatever it is to show the streets that are closed for construction that day. I'm sure it'd be a simple layer to put back over top of there. Or a couple of layers that they could click on to see which is a state road, which is a county road. But Mr. Rippey assured me that we can do that. Uh, in concert with Ms. Beard's office and Mr. Richardson, who puts out that information. So I've already had that discussion in it. That is on, that is on go right now.
You're on top of it, Mr. Russell, thank you.
Excellent. All right, thank you.
I have one more question for Ms. Beard. And I'm not sure if this is solely in your area, Ms. Beard, by all means, but I did have a. A resident contact me about Crestwood, you know, possibly putting in speed bumps or something in that area due to speeding or maybe another light or something of that nature, but. Not sure if that's all in there, but you know, a speed bump would be asphalt or something of that nature, but. Maybe, I don't know, maybe we just need to look in that area some to see what what's going on in that area. Again, you know, may not be completely in your area, but.
Yes, we can look and see. I will note that we have an issue with speed bumps and snow removal. So that's the only thing that holds us back sometimes with that, but we'll look into it.
Yeah, that's a huge problem. Okay, thank you. I appreciate you looking into that.
Commissioner Wismann.
Mayor, while we're here, I I was going to mention it offline, but I've been made aware just today, Schinkle Lane. That I understand has already been in contact with you, that curve on Schinkle. Is a consistent problem where people continue to drive right through the. The guard rail and into a house recently and have recently hit it again. If we could. Um, I was going to send you an email tonight, Katie, but, or Ms. Beard, if you would. Figure out something, maybe we need some flashing curve notifiers there or something of that effect. If you all could look at that. Appreciate it.
We'll look into that.
All right, thank you. And as a special note, remind, folks need to understand too, I get this asked to me a lot. About why the city doesn't fill potholes or repave streets. A lot of those streets that they're talking about are state or federal highways or roads. And example, Second Street in front of City Hall is is a is US 60. So it's not maintained by the city. Which makes it a little interesting for us having our offices on that corridor. There's a lot of things, and again, this is not to criticize. Any other government, but again, I know that our staff works diligently and very hard to to locate. Uh, areas that need paved. And repaved rather, and then also to fill in potholes. So. Please understand, if people have question about something, you know, feel free to call. Any of us or call our city manager or different staff and they can let you know which streets are city. Maintain and which ones are are not. So please understand that our staff is doing. The best they can with the limited resources that they have and and understand too, if if we miss something, we're more than happy to go back. And and take care of that. But a lot of the complaints that I get are not on city maintained streets, but unfortunately, we we take the. The blame and the criticism for it. But again, thanks to our staff for being out there and doing the work that you all do and. You know, just keep up that effort and we'll see all of these potholes get fixed hopefully before winter, just in terms that they can pop open again. Mayor. Commissioner Wismann.
I was just going to ask while we're on that discussion, Mike and Mr. Russell. Mentioned he's already been on top of building an interactive site. Might we also include street lights getting ready to go into the dark? Winter season. Um, it seemed to be very simple, just to put a a button to submit the. The number on your street pole in your neighborhood or something while you're maybe out looking at or hitting a pothole. Submit those out street lights. I just did a. A request for about five a couple of weeks ago and they were they were fixed within two days. So. Just want to thank staff for for doing that, but that is a concern getting ready to come up into the winter season, right?
All right, good point. All right, um. We look forward to driving down all these smooth streets again. Unfortunately, again, we can only take care of the ones that our city maintain, folks, so please. Understand that, but again, if you see something, report it to us and we'll take care of care of it very quickly. Uh, next item number 10, this is a follow up on. Uh, previous discussions, I believe back in June. Talking about. Police reform issues. So the US Conference of Mayors Task Force. Recently released in August. The. Report on police reform and. Uh, social justice. And I know that I shared that information with the police chief for his review. He's, I know he's reviewing it. Um, and then also to follow up on our minority outreach program last year. We talked about putting together a working group, but at the time the police chief asked. That we let him and his staff. And others in city government. Do that internally. So we've done that and I know the chief has some information and because of the. Uh, issuance of the US Conference of Mayors report that came out in in the. Uh, in August. Thought we put these issues together and I'll turn it over to the police chief for just a brief. Or as long as he needs, but I don't think it's going to be too long update and then can ask you any questions. So thank you, chief, for all the work that you're doing. And again, also to our civil service board for their work that they're doing. The five members of the civil service board are working diligently to. To help find qualified recruits. That. You know, meet our. Guidelines and and under a civil service form of. Of hiring that takes all the politics, are supposed to take politics out of it. I can, I can tell you that we've got five members that take their job very seriously and. We appreciate those five members of the civil service board doing what they're doing. And I know the chief. Uh, can expand on that if if he needs to, but. We thank you for everything that you're doing, chief, to to keep everybody in the community safe and. Again, a special thanks to you and the the staff and our patrol officers and shift commanders. Dispatches and everyone that's. Dealing with the things that they're dealing with. It's a hard time to to be in law enforcement. Again, as as always, my continued support. To you as the chief and all the the brave men and women you've got in your department, and that goes for. Fire and dispatch and emergency management too, as folks that are out there dealing with really tough issues. So. We appreciate what you're doing. Want you to know that that we we're here to support you and our and our officers.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I know that we know you all support us and we appreciate that and. I I may be a little biased, but I think we have an excellent public safety program here in Frankfurt. Uh, from emergency management to the police, fire and dispatch. And I think that. Uh, you know, there's always room for improvement. So I think I'll start with the recruitment. And of course, COVID has thrown a glitch in a lot of. Things that we would have liked to have tried. But we did have, we reached out to Dr. Williams. Dr. Williams is in charge of the criminal justice program at K-State, but before that, before he retired. He was a major with KSP and one of his jobs. Uh, before he retired was recruitment and. One of the first things he said was there's no silver bullet when it comes to recruitment and fixing. Uh, the recruitment problems. So let me, you know, you you mentioned the hard, the the. I guess rough time we're having and law enforcement and the media and the negative attention. And that type of thing and. You know, and I agree, I believe that most police officers in this country, they come out and they do a good job and they serve their communities and. I think they are getting somewhat of. Um, an unfair rap as far as that goes, but where it's also, the reason I kind of mentioned that is because it's also making it hard to recruit. Um, back in 1999, when I applied, I think we had somewhere of 150 to 200 people show up that. Cold, wet March morning at Western Hills and. You know, they were all there looking for jobs. I don't know how many positions were actually open. Uh, but I hear the same thing, you know, Lexington, Louisville, they used to have a couple thousand people show up for. 20, 20, 30 jobs. We're not, we're not getting that now. We had 31 total applications. Starting Saturday morning. 18 of those people showed up. Um, three of them failed out of the PT testing. So we had 15 people take the written applica- or the written test. Um, so that's. That's kind of the struggle we're in right now, and it's that way across the country. It's not just here in Frankfurt. Now, the the. The the positive side to that is it's a very diverse group. Um, and part of the reason I believe it's a diverse group is because we. Um, made it intentional to reach out to those people who applied and make contact with them. Keep their interest up, make sure they had all their paperwork in that they needed. Um, and followed up with them. Uh, this year we didn't get to do the, we usually try to do a like a practice PT test. So. So they know what they have to work on. We tried to do that a month out. We didn't get a chance to do that because of the. Renovation at Western Hills and Franklin County's football and football fields and their tracks. So. The other positive is with the ordinance change you all made last last month for us. We actually have eight applicants going into our November testing that we'll be able to do. Um, now hopefully all of them show up, but that's that's a positive because before we would have had to have made those people wait until next summer. And they may not have still been there to to even have the opportunity to test them. So. some of the things we are trying to do as far as recruitment. Of course, you all know about the internships and, you know, those students may not necessarily want to be police officers later, but it it opens us up to those directors and those department heads to be able to to recruit the School of Social Work at UK or the Criminal Justice Program at Midway or KSU. And so it's really, it's that building that kind of relationship where we can get in and they may have a student that's that wants to wants to do criminal justice. Job fairs, we typically have been doing, or we've been trying to do more, but where everything's moved to online and they still want to pay the same, they still want to charge us the same $150 fee as an in person job fair. I don't I don't feel like we can justify making that payment, but we will, we will continue to look for opportunities along that. And then I've kind of already mentioned it a little bit, but reaching out the non traditional programs. One of the, we've already hired an officer who was a social worker previously, and actually a gentleman tested with us this weekend that currently works for DCBS. And I think that gives us, you know, that's that's a diverse, that's a different outlook. You know, they want to serve their community. They want to just do it in a different way. They don't necessarily want to do it in social work. So we are reaching out to those schools at UK. I want to extend that out to Cincinnati, Northern Kentucky University, Louisville, all those schools. So those are some of the things we're working on. And that we've actually got in place. The biggest thing, though, is really hometown. It's just building relationships. Building relationship with the kids, the youth program up at KSU that we're doing, the Police Call Me Mister program, that the after school. Working any chance we get, whether it be in the schools and building those relationships and getting those kids to trust the police, you know, like the police. And hopefully, maybe one day want to be the police here in Frankfurt. And that's, that's a long term goal. It's not a again, it's not a silver bullet. As Dr. Williams said, there's no magic fix to it. But I think that's an important part. And then I also feel like we need to give them a police department that they can like and they can trust. And I think we're doing that. But it it's just a, it's a whole group effort. Our officers have to be out here recruiting. They have to be, you know, representing our department. They have to be talking to people that they run into about becoming police officers. It's, there's just a lot that goes into it. And we are always looking for new ideas on that. I I spoke with Veterans Affairs recently and actually had a meeting with the Department of Criminal Justice Trainings Coordinator, Commissioner, and two of his staff about how we can work veterans into our hiring process, how we can maybe get them in the police academy faster, and not just us, but other agencies as well. So that's, that's something we are exploring. And so I'm open to ideas, but these are some of the ones we're working on right now. Any questions on that? Go ahead.
Commissioner Westman, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, you know, I've I've talked with this or Chief Adams recently, and I will reiterate that I've been proud of the the job you've been doing over the last year. And you didn't mention that you're also teaching at Kentucky State University. Unfortunately, only one class this semester, hopefully back to two next term. But I think you're doing just about everything we can feasibly do. You're actively working turn, great dividends, but it's going to take a while. Obviously, we're going through a difficult time where where maybe not as many people want to be a police officer and but hopefully Frankfurt can help change that mindset a little bit.
Commissioner Sauer.
Yes, Chief, I have to say I appreciate most the work that you've done by ordinance degrees, the skids, you might say, in putting a policeman on the job sooner, you know. In years past, it's been, you know, a year and a half, two years before we finally get them on the street and so forth. And the work that you've done through ordinance, again, to help that time lag be shorter, so much shorter, I really appreciate.
Commissioner Walbridge.
Yes, Chief Adams, I know we talk regularly, and I just want to thank you so much for what you're doing and all of your officers are doing. It's amazing. I'm looking forward to so much more in the next six months as well as moving forward. And so, you know, just I know you and I spoke about it, and I definitely volunteered my services to help with any recruitment that we may need to have someone that looks like some of the recruitment we're trying to recruit. But I've also been talking with Kentucky State in their Justice Department. They spoke very highly of you. I just spoke with them actually this week. So spoke very highly of you. Look forward to working with them and working on some things right now with them that I know that they'll be including you on as well. So just want to say you're doing a great job. And I just appreciate you being out there in the streets. I appreciate you during the fireworks, being out there and talking with the students, the kids rather, as they pass by. I had so many different questions to ask you guys. It was good to see you interacting. I just absolutely love it. So thank you and continue up doing a great job.
Thank you.
Any other comments on recruiting effort? And thank you, Chief, and to everyone in your department for working hard on all the aspects that you have to deal with.
It is diverse.
And again, as we continue to look through the report from the US Conference of Mayors on police reform and racial justice, I don't I don't know if the Chiefs had a chance to really go go through it as much as as you would like. So we'll, we'll continue looking at at that aspect to see if there's anything that we do here. Again, I'm so thankful. At least during my time here, I don't remember a single time when anyone has made any kind of really strong allegations of any inappropriate actions by our police officers that resulted in anything of significance. I guess we're blessed that we have a department that has not had to deal with those types of issues that some cities are dealing with. So that's something that we can be thankful for. And I know with your leadership, that's something that you would never tolerate anyway. But if you want to comment on it now or just wait till we get a chance to review it more, that's
I mean, it's it's up to you all. I've I've reviewed, I've I've read through most of it. I reviewed the summary, which kind of breaks down at the very beginning. In all honesty, we're we're doing most of these things already. And, you know, I Kentucky cannot, unfortunately, does not rank very high in a lot of categories often, but in law enforcement training, in a lot of ways, we're ahead of the curve. So a lot of this, a lot of these recommendations are already in place in our department. So and, you know, we are, you know, we're doing the outreach to the community the best we can, the ways that we're trying. But if there's any specific questions, if you all have specific area that you want me to comment on, I can do that.
Like you did a good job presenting, presenting. All right, that's great. We'll move on. Chief, thanks for your continued efforts and let us know if you can help. I know that we approved some equipment upgrades that we were able to get through the CARES Act. We've made some initial purchases of that. So again, we'll continue to to support your all's efforts.
Thank you.
Next item is a first reading of an ordinance fixing rate of taxation. I'll ask the solicitor to read it, but title and summary only.
Sorry, I was having a little trouble connecting. An ordinance fixing the rate of taxation for the year 2021 on all motor vehicles and levying said tax for all city purposes. This ordinance fixes the rate of taxation for the year 2021 at the sum of 22 and seven tenths cents on each $100 valuation on all motor vehicles subject to taxation in the city.
Thank you. And we'll have public hearings on September the 27th. So as as usual, we'll post that information and make that available to the public. Commissioner Westman.
Mayor, I was just gonna ask Ms. Boyd on each of these to to give us the current year or or previous year's taxation rate. And Ms. Boyd, I understand this one has been fixed since the 1980s and it's sort of defined by state statute what we're allowed to do, right?
Correct. Yes. The first one that that Ms. Ross just read is on motor vehicles and motor boats. And Mayor, this one would not be subject to public hearing. The one that would be is the real property tax depending on how you all choose to go with it. But for this particular rate, it's the same one we've had, I guess, since 1984, as best I can tell. And we are bound by law for, I think, assessments dating all the way back to 83. It can't go I believe, any higher than that. So the 22.7 is in fact the rate that was used last year as well. Yes.
Thank you. Next would be first reading on item number 12. So ask the solicitor to read that by title and summary only, please.
Mayor, I'm actually have a question. So we we have two options here for item number 12. And I can, I think it'd probably be a little cleaner if you all chose which option you might like before we did a first reading.
Mayor, I have a spreadsheet and I'm happy to share my screen with you if you guys would like to see those two rates and the two options.
That'd be great.
Okay. Can everyone see that?
No.
Mine hasn't come up yet.
Is it, is it good now?
Don't see it. It's not up yet.
Hang on, maybe I'm doing something wrong. My apologies. I think I actually have to share my screen. I pulled it up, but then I didn't actually share it. I apologize. I'm a little technologically challenged, so.
It's all right.
Okay, so in this particular instance, the these, this, these companies, as you can see, from 2018 to 2019, they had assessments of 51 million and 46, 51 million and some change and 46 million and some change. Well, for 2020, it went up to 75, almost 76 million in assessment. So what would happen is, is given the rate we've always used, which is the rate that we are allowed to use by law, the city may may charge a rate of 15 cents per $100 assessed value. It would cause their tax bill, the tax bills to go up considerably. So and Mr. Russell, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but you discussed with the county what their rate is, and they actually have always been using a rate of 10 cents per 100. So we are recommending that we propose a 10 cent rate per 100. And then the tax bills would then roughly be around what they've been previously, which is between 74 and $75,000 for for that particular tax.
Thanks. Commissioner Tippett.
Someone can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe there's potential for real job growth, real significant job growth in this sector. I think I'm right here. There are going to be several new how I want to say this, new good jobs, good paying jobs, good benefits. I think I'm correct in this assumption, coming from this sector. So we're going to see, I believe, an uptick in our revenue, even if we keep it at 10 cents. So that's just I I think we're going to see revenue growth in in this sector. And it's good news for the city, I believe, if I if my assumptions are correct, and I think they are.
You're right. So Commissioner Westman.
Yeah, Mayor, I would just, I I think we need to look at the long term returns on our tax rates and and the potential investment in our community. And, you know, there, there is some some potential for growth here, as Commissioner Tippett said, and but I think it, we are, well, after talking with Mrs. Boyd today, I think we're in a better position financially than what we expected to be from the impacts of COVID on employment taxes and otherwise. And I think it would behoove us to to work to help businesses reestablish themselves. And if we can give savings and taxes to our community in any way and still maintain our position as a city, I think it's pertinent upon us to do so. So I would favor the 10 cent amount as well.
Okay, I think that's three. I'm not going to speak for anybody else, but I mean, I'm for that too. So let's
Agreed.
Thank you. Ms. Ross, if you just go on and read that. And summary only, please.
An ordinance fixing the rate of taxation for the year of 2020 on all taxable capital domestic life insurance companies subject to tax and levying said tax for all city purposes. That the 2020 City of Frankfurt Avalorum tax is 10 and no tenth cents on each $100 valuation on tax, sorry, on taxable capital of domestic life insurance companies.
Thank you very much. And we appreciate all those companies that are located here in the City of Frankfurt. Many of these companies have made significant employment contributions to us. They do a lot on the charitable side of things. They provided many jobs to our community. So we we just want to say a special thanks to all those that have chosen to be located here in the City of Frankfurt. Many of those have been there for many, many years. And I don't want to single anybody up, but we we appreciate them so very much.
Mayor.
Commissioner Walbridge.
I just want to sort of piggyback on, you know, other comments is, you know, we want to do what's best by our community and 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 really just appreciate the fact that we are better off financially where we are. And so, you know, the these moments to give us time to look at numbers and our budgets and and dig into what that first or second quarter may look like in 2021. You know, it it just behooves us as the commission to make sure that we are you know, controlling any non unneeded expense money right now, just in case, because if we continue down this path, you never know, there could be a tax break for our residents. So, you know, let's just keep our our spending in mind moving forward and try not to get reckless or do any unneeded spending. So we may be able to do that in the future. So thank you.
Next, would you please read item number 12, first reading by title and summary only, please.
Item, this would be item number 13. And this, again, we have several options for your consideration.
I believe Ms. Boyd's going to share her screen again.
I'm gonna try. Let's see if I can figure this out. Okay. Can it can everyone see that?
Not really.
I'm sorry. Okay, so.
Well, Commissioners, let me say this. There's an option, if you look to the right, you can, the the tab can increase the the size of that if you want to do that. Should be on the right side, a plus increases and a minus decreases.
Oh, great. That's awesome. Thank you.
You get it?
They'll see it.
So is everyone good now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, I went through all the calculations that, uh, were required to do based on uh, previous tax rates that we had for real prop- property and for personal property, and had to come up with our compensating rate, which is the rate that we could charge that would basically generate the same amount of revenue that we, um, or the rate we ass- could assess, I should say, that would generate roughly the same amount of revenue as we got last year. And then also another rate that I, that I was, uh, calc- that I've calculated, and this is a workbook that they put out to all the cities, and actually I got some assistance from the Kentucky League of Cities because I'd never done this before, so it was, it was quite an interesting, um, project for me. So I also did a calculation based on a four percent revenue increase, which is the maximum amount we could go up without being subject to a voter recall. Um, and as a matter of fact, uh, Mr. Sauer asked me that question earlier today, and, um, I asked that question of the League of Cities as well, and we would have had to have started this process much sooner to be able to go above even the four percent revenue increase. Now, the good thing about all of this, um, is that for our real property, because our assessments went up, uh, I wanna say, I wrote it down, um, I think it was one point seven billion, maybe, I mean, it went up by a lot, um. I wrote it down, I apologize for not having that piece of paper in front of me, but our assessments went up, so we're actually able to reduce our, our tax rate from what we used last year, or actually we're required to. So, uh, because we used tax rates of point one nine eight last year for real and personal property, this year, we would, even if we went up the four percent revenue increase, we're still below that rate. So I'll just walk you through these very quickly, so the section in yellow is our compensating rate, and, uh, if you choose to basically uh, obtain the same amount of revenue approximately that we did last year, the real property tax rate would be point one seven four, as you see there. Typically, what cities will do is they will also, um, assess personal property at that same rate, so again, point one seven four. Now, we're in a unique situation with our personal property tax assessments, those actually went down while our real property tax assessments went up, so we can, without any, uh, it's basically a substitute compensating rate for just personal property, and as you can see, that's the point two three seven two percent, or s- uh, cents amount. So, um, that would be our compensating rates if you choose to do that. And like I said, um, at least for the point one seven four, that's lower than your rates from last year. We do have a budget of three point one million, and last year we collected uh, three point one four million, as you'll see at the top of the screen. So that's one of your options. Now, um, another option, if you wanna go with a four percent revenue increase, and I'll try to scroll down for you, that's the green option here, um, so in that particular instance, we can go up as much as four percent, and the only thing would be, uh, a public hearing is required for that, so anything above one, um, anything above point one seven four percent is subject to public hearing. So we would have to have a public hearing if you choose to go to the point one eight percent for real property, that's the four percent increase. And we would get some additional revenue, um, if we kept both at point one eight, you're gonna see we're gonna get around a hundred and eight thousand in additional revenue, potentially. And then if we, if we use the point one eight rate for real, we can actually, because once again, personal assessment, property tax assessments went down, we can go as high as point two four five four percent, so we would collect an additional hundred and eighty thousand in that case. And then I just threw in another one, just for your all's benefit, so this very last option is basically a middle of the road option, it's the rate in between the compensating rate and the four percent rate increase, um, so, and you, as you can see, approximately fifty four thousand more in revenue, uh, or a hundred and twenty four thousand more in revenue if you choose to increase the personal property tax rate. So, um, that's, that's what I have, so you have three options here, and I'm happy to try to answer any questions you may have, but I do wanna thank Commissioner Sauer, he had some good questions that I was able to answer via email, and I hope that helped everyone earlier today when you spoke about, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay.
Mayor, just have one.
Sauer has.
Okay, um, Mayor and members of the commission, I, I really wish we would look towards the compensating rate and make, you know, the tax, uh, burden on uh, our citizens no greater than it was last year. Um, uh, conservative economists would tell you that a little, a little extra money in, um, our citizens' pockets can go a long way with the multiplier effect, that after they spend it at the grocery store, it can be multiplied, and that is going to, those profits are gonna be used to pay for the employees of the grocery store who are gonna go out and buy gasoline, et cetera, et cetera, how the multiplier is affected. And, uh, it's hard times for a lot of people, we've talked about small business people, there are other people that, you know, are, have been laid off from work. Um, we are healthy because a very conservative budget that we are working with right now, that this commission proposed and certified. Um, but I think this would be a good idea uh, to take the compensating rate on both real and personal property and not increase the tax burden any further. Thank you.
Um, may I, may I add one clarification, Mayor, do you mind?
Sure.
I, I found that piece of paper, I apologize for this, our tax assessments for real property actually went from one point four six billion to one point seven billion, not an increase of that. So I apologize for that, I was trying to go off the top of my head while I was trying to find the piece of paper, but our rate, our assessments actually went to one point seven billion, so, in total.
Alright, Commissioner Wissman?
Yeah, uh, Ms. Boyd, can you tell us, um, I'd ask you earlier today, and I forgot to write it down, what the, uh, previous year's, um, personal property, tangible property tax rate was, and the compensating is twenty three point seven two?
Okay, so, um, if you'll see at the top of the screen there, Commissioner Wissman, it's small, right? Um, so the, uh, real and personal property tax rate that we used last year was point one nine eight. Um, and then this year, if you decide to go with the compensating rate, it would be point one seven four, and if I understood Commissioner Sauer correctly, he's, he's proposing the personal, personal rate to be that same amount, point one seven four, but by law, you could go as high as point two three seven two for personal property tax. You can go anywhere in between those amounts, basically, for personal property tax, your compensating rate for real is gonna be the point one seven four, there's no wiggle room there with compensating rate. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes.
Okay, you're very welcome.
And, and you know, I think too, we need to point out too, that as city government, city governments don't get that much revenue from property tax. It's not the biggest part of our, um,
Yeah, it's three point one million, yes, sir.
Not that that's anything to sneeze at, but, um, Commissioner Sauer has that sitting on the table right now, he's getting it, he's doing it with his grandchildren.
When you look at it in terms of occupation tax, it's a lot, it's much lower, yes, sir.
Commissioner Wissman?
Mayor, I would just, uh, I would actually echo, um, Commissioner Sauer's, uh, preference that, um, that taking the compensating rate this year, um, we ask the community to use that extra savings to invest in the community, uh, to put those dollars back into our businesses, and, um, you know, maybe it's another way to help spur economic recovery here in, in our community, particularly at the end of the year, maybe, you know, invest that in, uh, in our businesses during the shopping season, the holiday season, um. I, I think we're in a better position than we expected to be, thankfully, we have a pretty healthy rainy day fund that can hopefully fill the gap, and, um, so I, I agree, uh, with the compensating rate.
I think that's true, cuz that's where I was heading to, um.
I agree as well.
Ms. Boyd, real quick. What is, do you, and this is one of those spur of the moment questions. Do you have the figures what our, um, reserve fund balance is as of today, and if it's not today, the last time that you looked?
That is, it's a very tough amount to just kinda calculate at the spur of the moment. But I, I really don't think that it's gonna change drastically over what was presented in the twenty nineteen audit, which was roughly, I wanna say seventeen point nine million in unreserved. So, just to be completely transparent and completely conservative, I would say it'll fall somewhere between sixteen point five million and seventeen million. I mean, it should be roughly around that amount. I don't know of anything huge that, I mean, cuz I only came in May thirteenth, so I don't know of anything that would cause it to drastically decrease, but I feel like it would probably be similar to the amount that was reported to you last year, now, I'm, but I've, we've been working with the auditor, um, and, um, you know, unless something changes and he finds something that I don't know about, and you know, that could very well happen, but, um, just my good conservative estimate, that's where, where I would have it fallen in, so.
Thank you very much, that's a pretty healthy reserve.
That's a healthy reserve.
Mayor, just for, for clarification purposes, last year's rate was nineteen point eight, so at a, a seventeen point four would be two point four percent savings, uh, for our community in, in tax rate this, by doing this decision. I am right in those numbers, but it's, that's where we're at.
Alright. Any other comments?
Oh, have we decided on the compensating rate, Mayor?
We did.
Okay, that's good.
There was, yes. So I'd ask this, thank you, Ms. Boyd, for your work on that. Um, continue to be impressed with your, uh, work ethic and your knowledge of city, you know, government budgeting. We appreciate having you on board.
Thanks, sir.
All the other staff, our department heads, our city manager, and everyone who are working to uh, get all these information to our, our, uh, finance team, we, we appreciate your effort. Alright, so we can take that off, I think everybody's ready for that to be removed from the screen, correct?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That was my cue to kind of, you can take it up. Alright. And then I'll ask the, um, solicitor to read by title and summary only at the rate of one point seven four, I'm sorry, point one seven four.
Point two one seven four.
Alicia, which version is that?
That would be option one A.
One A.
Basically, compensating rate?
Yeah, and you wanted the compensating rate to be the same for personal property as well, correct? So it should, it should be option one A then, Laura, I'm sorry, Ms. Ross.
No, here, oh, and I called you, Alicia, uh, thank you, uh, okay. An ordinance fixing the rate of taxation for the year of twenty twenty on all real intangible personal property, subject to tax, public service companies, and levying said tax for all city purposes. The twenty twenty City of Frankfurt Avalorum tax rate is seventeen and four tenth cents on each one hundred dollars valuation of all real and personal property. Seventeen and four tenth cents on each one hundred dollars valuation on public utilities and public service companies taxable on a franchise basis.
Alright, thank you very much. Um, we still got the screen on the bottom part of the page here. If we could just get that off. Um, let's see. Next item.
Your screen is still shared, I believe.
She's, she's trying, I can see your cursor moving, um. Now, the next item, uh, on our parks projects update, um, we've been looking at some things, uh, city manager has taken some very quick action, which I'm very pleased that he's done, to do some renovations, uh, at Dolly Graham Park and some of the other parks, along with our, uh, parks director, uh, Sean Pickens, and their wonderful staff who are out there daily, uh, sometimes nightly, working on updates in the parks. And again, at this last weekend, we had the governor's open golf tournament. Um, was very pleased to see Governor Beshear show up and do welcome and make some remarks, it's always good to have the governor come to the, uh, to the course, and we were very pleased to, to be able to host him, so again, and thanks to our, our wonderful golf pro, Kirk Schooly, for the work that he, he did on that tournament, and in particular, all of the folks who work on the greens and all the things in the pro shop, all the, the staff that make all that stuff, all those, sorry, all those tournaments and other activities in our parks, so good, so we, uh, we thank you all, uh, for that, Mr. Pickens, and well, I guess, um, city manager, or do you wanna go first, or do you want, we wanna let Mr. Pickens go first? And then, Commissioners, any questions?
If you wanna do, Mayor, it's, uh, Mr. Pickens can update us on, uh, uh, Capital View and Fort Hill, and we'll, we'll save, uh, Dolly Graham, we'll do Dolly Graham at the, at the end of that conversation.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks, Mr. Pickens. You're still muted, sir.
There you go, sorry.
Okay.
Um, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I'll start with Capital View, um, and just briefly go through those projects there and answer any questions that you might have. Uh, the lighting project, um, field one, Sour Field is, is almost complete. Um, I talked with them late last week, and I expect them to be completed either the end of this week or, or the early next week on Sour One will be completed. Um, I was told that they're gonna hold off, the plan is to hold off on field number two because they don't think they can get field two done before the All A Classic, which is not coming up this weekend, but the weekend after, the twenty fifth, I believe. So, just so they're not rushed and they don't mess up something, or half the field is lit and they need both fields for the All A Classic, they're gonna wait to start on field number two after the All A Classic, so, but by the end of September, both fields should be lit and, uh, will be good to go, so, but things are moving forward on that, and, uh, shouldn't, shouldn't be no, no problems here on out. Um, we are working on a plan, we're actually going to discuss this with the Parks Board on Wednesday, uh, and there'll be further discussions, we won't make a final decision, uh, Wednesday, but the old lights that are coming off of Sour One, um, and Sour Two, um, are still in relatively good condition, um, they're not the best, but they could be repurposed. So we have several organizations in town, um, that are looking to use the old lights, so we're gonna start that discussion with the Parks Board, um, and then talk with, um, city manager and other folks to make sure where exactly we want those old lights to go, so, um, so that, that conversation will, will go on, so. Um, also, uh, Capital View, the sewer project's getting ready to start. Uh, I see Kenny on here, if, if you just wanted to give a brief update on that, Kenny.
Yeah, we should be starting later this week on the Capital View project, we're actually gonna put two crews on it. Um, we've been able to rent, uh, two large Tracos that, that will help us, uh, get the project done a little bit quicker than we, what we had expected. Um, we had a little delay in our pothole on Logan Street, which has kind of delayed us a little bit this week, but, uh, other than that, we, we should, we get started by the end of this week and full force next week. other than that, we we should we get started by the end of this week and full force next week.
Okay, thank you. Um, any questions on Capital View before I move on to Fort Hill?
Mr. Westman?
Man, I was just wondering about the timeframe for that sewer upgrade.
It should take us about six to eight weeks to complete the project.
Any others on? Sorry, Commissioner Sauer, I'm so sorry.
Sean, I really appreciate your work in repurposing those lights, so. Uh, are you going to use them uh with other nonprofits, or maybe some of the lights may maybe where we need them?
We're we're leaning towards wanting to keep them at the park. Um, so like I said, several organizations have reached out to us that that want to use them. Um, and just the couple of conversations that I've had with Mr. Russell, you know, we we've we're leaning towards, like I mentioned, keeping them in the park, so uh either for the use at the softball fields for Frankfurt High, um, that trip that mainly use those fields uh is is kind of what we're leaning towards, but we're not going to make a final decision until we weigh out all the options and and speak to everybody that needs spoken to, so.
Yeah, I remember Commissioner Waldridge uh was interested in a couple of the ball fields that needed lights. Have we already taken care of those?
Yes, that they've they've been patch fixed. Uh, those those lights really need to be replaced in the relatively near future, uh, but they are operational currently.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Okay. Next item?
Uh, I'm going to move on briefly to Fort Hill. Um, we are real close to ordering the split rail fencing. Um, we've had to get some paperwork from the company to be able to get them in the system so we can pay them. Um, so we're waiting on their W nine form and then get them set up in the system so we can get the P O issued. But I expect to get that done this week and then have split rails ordered. Uh, then they said about a four week, uh, four to five week lead time to get them get them made and get them shipped here. Um, so I fully expect um, you know, this fall to have the split rail fencing up at Fort Hill, uh, hopefully before the first snow hit, so. Um, signage, uh, Commissioner Sauer, you had a couple of uh commission meetings ago, you had um requested a motion on several of the entrance signage coming in at Clifton Avenue and uh at the base of Military Road. Um, I've got several of those drafts already ready and put together. Um, I'm in coordination with Craig Potts at the Heritage Council um to make sure we're correct on all the K R Ss and all the regulations and the Antiquities Act. I just want to make sure the verbiage is correct on the sign, so we don't make a sign and have to remake it. So I've reached out to him a couple of times and I haven't heard back yet, but I'll keep reaching out to him just so we make sure those are are good to go, so.
That's wonderful, Sean. I really appreciate that, and we may need to do, you know, I don't want to micromanage, but we may need to do some cleanup work um around those sites that we are going to put the fencing uh around because they're overgrown already, and we might need to do some work there.
Yes, uh, we're we're already on top of that. Uh, Mr. Russell and I have talked uh at length about uh my downtown crews, which takes care of Fort Hill. Um, they're a little bit understaffed currently, and uh so he has allowed me to add a couple of staff, part-time staff, seasonal staff, so that way I can better maintain Fort Hill, so that is in the works as we speak. Um, also, we are, we've taken down, or we're going to be taken down if we haven't already, the Sullivan House sign and making those repairs um to it, so. We're going to have a local company repaint that, change the verbiage on there and get that all repainted, so that's in the works as we speak now as well. So. Um, then the final thing on Fort Hill, um, I'll be working with um with Ms. Ross and Mr. Russell uh on a policy moving forward. Um, you know, any ground that's just that's disturbed um on parks, you know, making sure that we run any any of those type of activities through the Archaeological Society, uh, UK. Um, Mr. uh Dr. Mink from UK Archaeology had uh sent us an email not too long ago, just just stating that, so uh we're going to work to make sure that if we build buildings or we build trails or we do whatever, especially with the Parks Master Plan ongoing, and uh we fully expect some projects coming out of that in the relatively near future. So we'll make sure that we're that we're on top of that and running any projects through UK Archaeology or through the Heritage Council, making sure we cover all our bases, so. With that, I'll take any questions on Fort Hill.
Mr. Westman?
Sean, uh, just um two two quick things. You had um found fencing at a great savings. Potentially.
Yes, that is correct.
Last meeting.
Yes, that is correct.
Can you elaborate on what the difference?
I I just received, I just went out and got three different quotes, and there was about a six thousand dollar difference from from one quote to the lease quote for the same product. We're ordering cedar, um, eleven foot long cedar post, um, which cedar is is very resistant to rot and and holds up outdoors very well. Um, so we we saved about six thousand dollars on on this on the cedar product, so.
And thank you, thank you, Sean. But the other thing, um, you mentioned you're looking at hiring some part-time staff that we're, we just don't have enough people, frankly, we could, we have to maintain the vast amount of park holdings that our city has. Um, have you been able to fill those? I'm just thought you could make a plug here if anyone's watching that um that we do have a couple of positions that we're looking to to find some help.
I believe we are, we are completely full uh with with the new additions. We're going to see, we've added um, we've added two part-time staff for downtown, and we've added one for Fort Hill, and we're looking at adding a second. We have somebody kind of in the works for that. So so it doesn't, anybody can apply. We can always use applications. We may not be able to hire them right away, but we'll always keep those applications in our back pockets for for future reference, so.
Mayor?
Commissioner Tippett?
Um, I think I may mention this to the city solicitor. Um, uh, Director Pickens has mentioned collaborating with the uh K Y O S A uh and seeking their guidance before we do anything that's got anything that moves earth in any in any form. Uh, and that's, of course, uh, in keeping in line with the Antiquities Act. Um, so I guess my question is, should we not have all of our departments uh make that a citywide policy? Or all of our departments should collaborate with the uh K Y O S A and make sure that we're not disturbing uh archaeology, significant archaeological sites anywhere. Uh, just thinking, throwing that out loud, thinking out loud, that should be probably my humble estimation, a citywide policy.
Uh, does anybody want to staff was coming on that, or just we can come back with a policy recommendation, or we can work with appropriate staff on that?
I would let, I was going to let Ms. Ross take the lead on that, uh, Mayor. I know she's reached out to uh, we're talking about reaching out to a different law firm with uh a specific uh skill set uh that we're looking for.
We can definitely take a look at that, uh, Mayor and Commissioners, and uh determine whether or not, you know, how a policy might be drafted. It might be a project if we uh are looking at a consultant for some of those issues anyway. And we can come back to you all with a policy.
Perfect.
Yeah, I would just um say that I would agree that um there's been some suggestion of of impacts recently as part of the East Main Hill project, and I suspect that Second Street, when that gets going, we're going to find all kinds of foundations and things that are unknown. We 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 need to be who better prepare and manage um what we find. There can be some significant repercussions if if don't, and um I think we've uh skirted those lines in the past, so I think we need to put that in place quite soon.
And and Mayor, may I?
Yes, Commissioner Tippett.
I'm not sure. I don't I'm not, I don't pretend to be a lawyer, but I you know, it may be required by statute that we do that. We may have been in violation of the law for a very long time.
If any federal are used in.
Yes, right, right. Thank you.
Mayor. Mother. Mayor. Commissioner Sauer, sorry.
Um, yeah, Mayor, uh, City Manager, uh, Parks Director, uh, fellow Commissioners, I'd like us also just to take a look at the first waterworks of Frankfurt, Kentucky. Uh, Eric, does that go back to eighteen oh three? Um, and it probably needs some repair. Uh, just in the master plan, you might look at that. Sean, you you're past president of the Kentucky Parks Association. Are you, should we call you Chairman of the Board? When you, when your past passed, are you chairman?
Well, I'm not chairman anymore, thank goodness.
All right. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll make, um, we have a repair project currently in the works. Um, there's a P O, I believe, waiting in the system right now as we speak. We're gonna uh, we're going to repair the mortar in the tower. There's several areas of the mortar that are that are in bad repair, so we've got a stonemason from town uh from Frankfurt that's coming out and making significant repairs to that tower. Just over the years, just wind, rain and and stuff has kind of wore on it, so we are making some repairs to shore that up.
Mayor, uh, I think we ought to reach out to the Plant Board to see if they might like to join us in such endeavors. Uh, they have a vested interest in that area. And uh perhaps you or um or Sean or the city city manager could take a look at that.
Will do.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Commissioner Westman, have your hand up.
Mayor, I I think that's a fantastic idea. You know, we should be very proud of that waterwork system that predates Louisville, Chicago, all the other famous ones in the war in America. Um, we uh just a few years ago discovered Liberty Hall had running water in eighteen hundred in the basement, you know, that's that's something our that really sets our community apart, and I I love that recommendation, Commissioner Sauer. Um, but uh, Mr. Pickens, I was going to uh mention that that I'd like to talk with you offline about the um the tower. Um, that that is built in a very unique manner for here, and it needs to be treated in with a some some skill and expertise in the materials that are chosen to to treat that, so I'll I'll uh follow up with you, and if I forget, please get with me.
Yeah, go. Yeah, we've had staff out there, Andrew Kamak, that's pretty knowledgeable on that area. Um, that's met with our, who we got to to do that work, and uh he feels comfortable they're gonna, they're gonna do it in the right way, but I'll get with you.
All right, any others on uh Fort Hill? Hey, thank you all for your work, and I know um our staff's been working diligently on that, trying to get information, and again, uh special thanks to Mr. John Carlton for his vast amount of research and knowledge on historical perspective of things. So we appreciate his work.
Mayor, I I
Commissioner Westman?
Hey, one other thing, um, Mr. Pickens, I had a a thought. Um, there's been quite a bit of discussion in the community about the uh ability to reconnect um Fort Hill to the downtown through some kind of pedestrian way. Do you have any updates? Um, I know I've I've am in process of working with some citizens to suggest a couple of alternatives um for for future access, but um for now, do you have any that will be part of the park plan, of course?
Yeah, yeah, I don't have any specific update right now. Uh, I do, I have discussed that with the master plan consultants that we would like to reconnect, you know, I explained to them I used to go from Riverview up there and how things have got disconnected with the demolishing of the tower. Um, so that will be in their plan. Uh, I know John Carlton is also looking at that as well, so.
We've discovered a um a portion of an old road that used to come down to where St. Clair intersects Fort Hill that that may be an ideal sort of place to reconnect, considering the new development um that will be right there adjacent, so people can easily go hiking after, you know, during throughout their day and um better use the um the hill to to for the community's benefit, so.
Yeah, and the uh, but we also discovered that the uh, I believe, correct or wrong ter terminology, but the border, the old border of the City of Frankfurt, right there behind the new office building, was discovered back along Fort Hill as well.
And some some other recent discoveries that are that are quite interesting, you know, stone walls that may have been some of the original boundary lines of the the first settlers of Frankfurt and some very cool resource force that we need to do a lot more to discover.
Yep.
You know, point out too, in nineteen ninety-nine, we were designated as a Millennium Trail by the White House Millennium Committee. So that was, you know, again, that was after we did the Riverview Park Trails to Capital View Park. Um, well, to um Fort Hill Park, and all that was meant to be a walking area downtown, and as has previously been stated, we had arrows on the pavement in downtown that um uh our first lady, Jane Beshear, worked with state government and our Parks Department, the city, to have those walking trails with certain levels of of ability. There are shorter ones and and longer ones, so. Again, all that was meant to tie in, and with the overpass, the walkway coming across um Wilkes and Boulevard coming out, that obviously created some problems, but you know, imagine that over twenty years ago, us thinking about having walking trails and all those things. I just point that out because we were thinking about those things back then. Again, it is long range, long range planning for the community, which we did. Mr. Russell, do you have your hand up?
Yes, sir, I was just gonna, uh, per the B O C, uh, at the last, at one of those last meetings, I have uh penned a letter to uh the State of Kentucky, uh, Finance, uh, to whom it may concern, seeking partnership uh for um different avenues and approaches on Fort Hill, on the on the parts down to bottom, on access to Fort Hill, to see if they would be interesting in partnering with us, even at a a short conversation with uh the owners of uh that building down there to see if they would be interesting in that. I haven't heard anything back yet, but but I have sent the those requests to them to see if they would welcome that partnership, to see if we can create something special moving forward uh into the future uh for Fort Hill.
Very good. All right, if there's nothing else on that, I guess we'll move into the update on Dolly Graham Park. Um, Mr. Russell, did you want to kick that off?
Yes, so uh, we're moving on Dolly Graham. Uh, we got some information back uh from the grants people just the other day, and uh probably wasn't the information we wanted, but uh the mayor has reached out to uh to Andy Barr and his staff to see uh looking for some help, so. Uh, that said, Mayor, I'll let you go from there, and then we'll we'll address the rest of it.
Okay, yeah, I'm going to pull this up on my screen. Uh, so as we said before, we've been in constant contact with the department, the governor's office, the Department of Local Government, and our staff has been working um with uh everyone they could, but as I committed, the commission uh wanted to try to to push it harder, so I've been texting based with Department of Local Government and our congressional delegation regularly to just remind them, we need to move fast on this, that the commission has made this a priority, and that uh us Congressman Barr is very good to answer my calls when I when I call him up on his phone, and he always takes my call. We talked personally, then he turned over to his staff and worked with uh the field staff in Senator McConnell's office and the folks at D L G, as I said, and and others in the governor's office. And we recently got back information that, again, the delay is because of COVID with the tribal councils uh are all closed, and there's a section in the grant that has to be checked off. There's a box that the National Park Service has to check off on that grant, that they have made the contact with the tribal councils, and they have to review that, and some of the things they look at, you know, is there any sacred ground there, burial grounds, that anything like that, that is of significance to to the tribal councils, and because the tribal councils are closed and have been closed for months because of COVID, uh, they can't move forward on issuing um releasing our money until they get that checked off. So that's the dilemma we're looking at now, and Congressman Barr is working very diligently with his staff to try to talk to, they, the last correspondence I had last week is they're going to personally make phone calls with the National Park Service to see if they can do anything to shake to shake that loose. If not, then we're probably looking at uh at January before National Park Service can release that, and that's based on the openings And that's based on the openings of the tribal councils. And that's all federal guidelines that apparently are very difficult to waive. But Congressman Barr has assured me he would personally be working with National Park Service and also our governor's office of local Department of Local Government. They're doing everything they can. But Senator McConnell's folks are also weighing in on it to see if there's anything that they can do to speed that up. So did you want me to anything else, Mr. Russell or or Mr. Pickens? And then I'll ask the commission for comments.
Just, no, sir, I know Ms. Hall has got the the same information and then you took it from there and pushed it a step forward farther than than we could get it. With the understanding that we are still moving forward on some things that we can do at Dolly Graham. Ms. Hall is providing us guidance on what jeopardizes our grant, what doesn't jeopardize our grant. But there are quite a few things that we can do to spruce up the the area and and create a a better environment down there. And I think that when Mr. Pickens gets the floor again, he can he can lead us into that conversation, sir.
Okay, and one to say too, one of the things the city manager and I talked about was could we go ahead and and do things like replace the playground equipment and not be penalized for for not do using our in kind match on that? And the answer we got back was no, because we were trying to just go ahead with that. We need to keep in mind, too, the parks have been closed since earlier this year due to COVID. So one of the things I want to point out too, in defense of our our Parks Department staff, the Parks Department staff hasn't been doing upgrades on on parks because people aren't supposed to be using them and at this point due to COVID. And I know that some people are looking at some of the expenditures or appropriations that the city has made, thinking that we're neglecting Dolly Graham Park. And I can assure you that not that is absolutely not true and is not the case. This has been a priority, Commissioner Tippett. And I think Commissioner Sauer might have been on the commission when this first came up three, four years ago, that that we've made this our priority. And then as of last October, when I was contacted by the governor's office, they were ready to make the announcement on the park with the grant. And at this point, you know, I said, we're all impatient on this. And that that's why I went ahead and asked, again, our congressional delegation to see if they could push on the federal side of things. I know our governor's Department of Local Government is doing what they can. But but just thought if we could get our congressional delegation working on it. And I know Congressman Barr is working very diligent on on that personally. And that's all we got for as of today. So I appreciate Mr. Russell jumping quickly into action on wanting to do some some things to spruce up Dolly Graham Park. And one of the things we talked about was some, you know, paint, that type of thing, and talking about putting murals, other little projects on the the shelter. So we're in the process of coming up with parameters on how to pick artists. We've reached out to folks in the community, so they're gonna that that's in the works. And then we'll let children in in a safe manner because of COVID. We have to be careful about exposures and touch points. It's a little different than than having kids do murals like we've done in the past. So again, we're going to involve the the planists, involve neighborhood children and others who use the park to be involved in that. So I think we'll at least see some what cosmetic changes and things we can do to go ahead and be prepped to to be ready for when the project gets released, so we can at least be a little bit ahead of the game. So I don't, Mr. Pickens was gonna add some stuff, Commissioner Sauer, you have a question?
Well, I don't have a question, but I just think you're absolutely right, Mayor. We need to do everything we possibly can without endangering the grant. And unfortunately, it looks like we may have to wait until January to to get the grant. But we're going to be locked and loaded. We've already designed or we've already accepted the design of the Parks Director who recommended a certain type of playground. We know who to get the stuff from. We're gonna send that letter as soon as we get the okay and put it make it a priority to get finished in a timely fashion.
But again, we're all we're we're not taking the final answer as yet. We're still pushing on it, but unless they can do something about the section that deals with the tribal councils, that's what our holdup is. Commissioner Tippett, were you raising your hand?
Well, Ms. Commissioner Walbridge had her hand up too, Mayor.
Oh, goodness, okay, everybody's moved on the screen on me now. Was Commissioner Walbridge first?
I I believe she was.
Commissioner Walbridge?
So I have a couple of things. So my first thing is that with the tribal, with the tribal group and approval, which I completely understand and respect by all means. However, is there a way that we could get around that as far as we are not building a park at a new location? We are literally taking something out of a location that's already been approved and then replacing something. So was there not maybe a tribal complete request at the time we did Dolly Graham many, many years ago? For that to be able to say, hey, we've already got it approved. We're not really doing anything different. It's in the same park and it's already gone through that. Is there something like that that could maybe be sent to them to say, hey, well, it's already been approved and we're not doing anything different? We're just pulling out and revamping?
Those are the arguments that we're trying to make.
Sean?
That is the argument we're trying to make, that this is just an upgrade. It's not. I guess we would be digging in the area that's going to put the the water features. But the rest of the park, we're saying like, that's already there. It's been there, you know, we reopened Dolly Graham Park. It was it was called South Frankfurt Park up until October of nineteen ninety nine. And we opened it as Dolly Graham Park then. And that's when we did the removal of the playground equipment to to really start upgrading it at that point. And then in that year, we we got a generous donation from former Mayor Frank Sauer, who helped a significant amount of money for that for the playground equipment. And we've had other upgrades since then that I think folks probably don't realize, like some of the things that we did, the the new pavilion, the shelter, rather, was was added at a significant, you know, significantly improved that too. But I don't know if Mr. Pickens wants to add anything different. Or not? No, okay. You don't have to, I just didn't know if you had anything.
No, no.
But that's the argument I'm trying to make.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's already a playground there. We'd go back in with a new playground in the exact same spot. Although this new playground is going to be quite a bit bigger, so the footprint is going to be a little bit bigger. But but that I know that's common sense, but I know it's just red tape we have to cross.
Right, all right, thank you.
That's
Mayor, Mayor.
Commissioner Tippett?
You can call me Scott.
I was like, I'm looking at us and Mr. Tippett.
We can go way back, we go way back. You know, what I what I I know that two of my colleagues here are are seeking reelection. And I know that they care deeply about this issue and they want it to occur. And if it if the worst case scenario comes and this thing does transition into the new commission, I I think it's incumbent upon the citizens to demand of these people who are running for city commission to commit, to see this project through. And quite frankly, if they don't commit, you shouldn't vote for them. I I just think it's it is that important to the community. It is way, way long overdue for the for us to invest in these in the East South Frankfurt and East Second Street. It's way overdue, you know, and I've said before many times, I said, you know, we, you know, the heck with the grant. You know, how many, how many years have we not invested in that in that area? So if we don't, so if it costs us two hundred and fifty thousand dollars more and we haven't invested, you know, any money in that area since nineteen ninety two, I think it, I still think we should be ready to cover the cost, you know, simply because of benign neglect. And it is benign neglect, you know, and and those old patterns that are beguiling us still this day. You know, we need to break those patterns, you know. It's it's very easy for us to give the well-connected and the wealthy what they want. It is more difficult to invest in areas that have been blighted and neglected. And quite frankly, I'm I'm just, I'm fed up. It is time, I I think it is time for us to to go to the federal government and go to go to Mr. Barr and say, look, you know, are you just, are you being upfront with us? Are you just trying to hold us off? And thus pursue it. And if the answer is, you know, you're probably not going to get that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, then let's write the check. You know, we we were just told by our finance director that we had eighteen million dollar reserve. She just told us that. And quite frankly, the previous administration was, you know, they were, the sky is coming down. We don't have any money. We don't wish we're spending too much, you know? Well, that's not true. That is a it's a false budgetary argument. And, you know, I I'm still going to say this, we need to build that park as soon as possible. Thank you.
And that's one of the things we talked about, Commissioner. Again, if if we need to do it, we do have the money. The thing I want to go back and look at, I asked our Parks Department to give me a list of upgrades at Dolly Graham. So the last playground upgrades we did were two thousand and four. And then we we did some other weren't really significant expenditures. But, excuse me, in two thousand and four, that was the last time we did playground upgrades at at Dolly Graham. And then when we started in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, looking at the the expansion to to determine the amount that was going to be spent, I'm looking, the reason I'm looking to the left, I'm looking at my screen with the information on it. This will be if this will be the nicest park, the nicest playground equipment, rather, that we have once that gets in there. And I I've expressed that to our governor's office, to the Department of Local Government and with our congressional delegation. And Congressman Barr assured me that he's going to be working on. And I said, I got an update from them last last week and shared that information with Ms. Hall and Mr. Russell. And I think I shared it with with Mr. Pickens, if if I think. And if not, I know that city manager and our grants folks did too. That's right, we we just, we expressed that to them. It's like, we need to get this expedited and anything that can be done to release that money. We want to see it happen before the end of the year. I'm sorry, Commissioner Wisman. It's funny, now this this square is around on me again.
Base tiles. I had reached out last week with a letter to Senator Senator McConnell and Representative Barr's office as well and was hoping that that would help in any way. But I wonder if, you know, in the our discussion with the Parks Consultants already, it's come up that there are playground voids, if you will, in many areas of the city. I wonder if it might not be a situation where we could defer the grant to another improvement in the city, perhaps Bell Point or Thorn Hill. We've been discussing potential playgrounds in those park areas. And just go ahead and pay for the the installation before the winter gets here of Dolly Graham. I wonder if we can explore that as an option to, you know, if we're not impacting an area. I I don't know if that will be an acceptable solution, but I wonder if we couldn't defer the grant fund for another project and go ahead and get this done. I know that playground is the the top priority of of half of the town, it seems like. And something we could do, obviously, we can go ahead and do it. And if we can use the grant funds in another manner and improve another area of our city, we we are very limited on the number of playgrounds we have currently, right? I mean, East Frankfurt even needs a significant improvement. We have just done Juniper Hills. Of course, they're not usable at the moment, but I'd like to see if Mrs. Hall and our representatives can maybe D L G can explore that as a as an option.
Yeah, I think it's probably going to be specific to this project because the way it was written, it's already been approved. Unfortunately, I wish that we could do what you said. But again, we've been thinking about every everything that we could do and even just going ahead and spending the money to do the playground part and coming back and doing the other parts later. But then we were told that that would jeopardize the whole project. So we can come back in a couple more weeks and then I guess the commission can decide again if if we want to go ahead and pass on the grant and spend the extra two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's certainly an option. But I I can't answer anything else other than what I just told you tonight. That's that's all I know so far from the responses that I've gotten from talking to everybody that I know to talk to. Haven't spoken to anybody at the White House yet.
Beyond that, Mayor, there were some other theoretical improvements at Dolly Graham that didn't make it into the final version for the grant. I remember discussion of some some additional improvements that if we could somehow work those out. But I had a just a couple of questions for Sean. There's a dead tree or dying tree that was to be removed this week. I was wondering an update on that. And then we have two workshops that community volunteers are going to come together and do an invasive removal to begin the process so we can see the riverfront and open up the riverfront at Dolly Graham. And I understand those are coming up, I believe, what, this weekend and or this week and next?
Yes, yes, the this this Friday from nine to noon and then next Friday, the twenty fifth, from nine to noon. We're partnering with Remove Invasive Partnerships, Chris Schumer and her organization. So we're, they've gathered some volunteers and we're also going to have city staff down there as well on those three days, focusing on invasive species along the riverbank, along the fence rows in Dolly Graham and continuing to clear those off.
Socially distanced, correct?
Socially, yes, yeah, socially distanced and masked. So then the woodland tree care started down there today, this morning, actually, on removing the the big dead tree right in the center of the park. So that's gonna, just that alone will free up a lot of, bring in a lot more natural light into the area. And there's a few other dead trees within the park as well that they're removing. So that'll help open it up and give it some more light in there, so.
So, Mr. Pickens, thank you for your staff, what you're doing. And Mr. Russell, thank you for jumping in and moving this along at a very fast rate of 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 work. We appreciate it. I know the community does too. Commissioner Sauer?
Commissioner Wisman mentioned maybe two or three things that didn't make our grant request. I don't know exactly what those two or three things were. If we looked at those two or three things that didn't make it in the request, why couldn't we see if we couldn't do one or two of them?
I think, Mr. Russell?
And not hurt our chances for the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Mr. Russell?
I think if you all will give me six weeks, you'll see a huge improvement in Dolly Graham. I've had conversations about repaving the basketball court and all of those kinds of things that don't jeopardize a grant. Ms. Hall, Ms. Hecker and Mr. Pickens and I had a long conversation about what would and what would not jeopardize this grant. There are a myriad of things that we can do down there to help this park. The big tree is gone. I went down there about two o'clock today. That is done, and it changed the lighting in that park substantially. I do have lights up in the pavilion now. I do have lights up in the pavilion now. So like I say, if I can buy a little bit of time, I believe we can make huge inroads into this project. And then if we choose to wait until we get the grant, when it is ready, we will be ready to to move that forward as fast as it will go.
Go for it.
Yes, thank you so much.
Quick question, there's been discussion back and forth about a dog park addition there. Could that, is that anything we have explored yet, or is that something we could? I know that was part of the original discussions for the grant.
Yeah, that, I'd have, I'd have to check and see, but I think that was in the original grant that we written. Rebecca may not, may not have a head, but but I can, we can chuck on that.
I'm pretty sure that was.
I think it was too.
All right. Thank you all for those updates, and again, I know we're all doing what we can to expedite. Unfortunately, the global pandemic is a very real impediment to a lot of things, and it's affected not only us locally, but obviously, state and federal government are feeling the same same, same problems. All right, next item would be executive.
2020 anytime soon.
Sorry?
We won't forget 2020 anytime soon, any of us.
Next would be an executive session. If someone wants to make that motion.
I will, Mayor. Mayor, move we go into executive session per K R S 61.810 subsection 1 subsection B for deliberations on future acquisition of real property related to the city, to city facility improvements and emergency housing, where publicity would likely affect the value of the property.
All right, move by Commissioner Wissman. Second, second by Commissioner Sauer, any discussion? CNN, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those like, sir?
Mayor, I'm going to take a one-minute recess.